Welcome and good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council, Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. It is 5:30 PM. We're located at Veterans Memorial Hall, 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. We do have a quorum of council members present, and I'd like to just ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you, and that brings us to our Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember McPherson, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report this evening, sir?
No closed session reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to Mayor and council members' reports, announcements, and, boy, if you have a presentation, I note here that we can do presentations as well. And so, Councilmember Addis, you want to start us off this evening? Any announcements or presentations?
I do have one announcement from the school district. The public is invited to a meeting on what the school district is doing in the area of equity, so in terms of serving all students and improving our programming. That's on Thursday, the 13th, at Bishop's Peak, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So the public here is invited as well to find out what all schools in San Luis Coastal are doing to improve equity in our district.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, you're up.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I want to recognize one of our extra-special Morro Bay citizens, Sandra Santoyane. Sandra became concerned with a proliferation of wild turkeys in her neighborhood. She has observed a flock stalking the city's meter reader, chasing him every time he got off his scooter bike. She's watched toms pecking at parked cars, and several of her neighbors have been chased by turkeys in their harems. Just one hen with six chicks two years ago has now become a flock of about 25 wild turkeys. They cause traffic problems, they peck at parked vehicles, they leave guano on drives and sidewalks, and they have become aggressive. So Sandra contacted Animal Control, the county trapper, and State Fish and Wildlife, and she got some informational brochures to give to her neighbors. Some residents are feeding the turkeys, and that creates a problem. Once turkeys become comfortable and lose their fear of humans, they become pests, they destroy gardens, they leave droppings on patios and decks and roost on cars. So please do not feed wild turkeys, or actually don't feed any wildlife. It's just not good for them, and it encourages bad habits. Second thing is, I want to bring attention tonight to some significant savings, cost savings, that are highlighted in this year's financial statement for the wastewater treatment plant that we currently share with Cayucus. Last year, we saved $53,000 by paying the unfunded pension liability payment in one lump sum at the beginning of the year instead of making monthly payments, and we saved an additional $54,000 in salaries by cross-training sewer collection personnel to wastewater operator functions. I really appreciate the attention that our managers bring to finding ways to save money for the city and for our taxpayer residents. So thank you very much. And for my SlowCog report, I want to give some projected construction dates from SlowCog's list of projects in our county. The Toro Creek widening on Highway 1 north of town will begin construction a year from now, spring of 2021. And the Highway 46 intersection with Vineyard, where Caltrans put in a stop sign last year, they're going to convert that to a roundabout this summer. And the Highway Y, on Highway 46 Y east of Cholam, will start construction in late 2023. I know that seems like a long time, very complex project, requires a lot of design time for it. And I will hold office hours this Saturday at Sun 'n Buns from 9:00 until 10:00 o'clock. So please come by if you have something to talk to me about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McPherson?
I don't have any announcements tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Heller?
I'd like to give a shout-out to Morro Bay Beautiful for all the buckets they've put around the town with sand in it, and the sign that says Park Your Butts Here. They're trying to collect as many cigarette butts as they possibly can. Unfortunately, a couple of buckets have been stolen, so please don't take the buckets home. They're designed for cigarette butts. They decided to drill holes in the bottom of the buckets with the hopes that no one would take a bucket with holes in it, but that's a whole other discussion. I'd also like to say that at the Integrated Waste Management Authority, the countywide authority that represents us in the trash department, I'm very big on recycling and trash and diverting things from the landfill, there was an ordinance passed today, tentatively passed, I think it'll pass for sure in April, but it's stepping up the ban on plastic bags in retailers. They're currently banned for large retailers, but it's going to be applied to small retailers as well. And if you're interested in that, you can send me a text or call me, or listen to my radio show this Saturday from 2:00 to 2:30 in the afternoon on The Rock, 97.31079. I'm going to talk more about recycling and diverting waste from the landfill and those kinds of things. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. One of the things we're trying to do is improve community engagement. That's one of our city goals, actually, is to engage the public that often doesn't show up at meetings or doesn't attend some of our subcommittee meetings, et cetera. Got a great idea from Councilmember Davis, who has been canvassing the neighborhoods and leaving just a general survey about issues regarding Morro Bay, and I think it's a great idea. So as your mayor, this last weekend, I've started just knocking on doors, no agenda, just asking what you think, going from neighborhood to neighborhood, and trying to get the pulse beat of the community that we often don't hear from. So if you see this guy in a Hawaiian shirt knocking on your door on Saturday afternoon, or what do you wear when you go? Various different things, usually a bike hat, knocking on your door, that's us just coming to say hi and trying to get input from our community on the issues of concern. So thank you. With that, we will move forward. City Manager Scott Collins, any announcements, sir?
No report tonight. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move to presentations, and we have Barbara Spagnola here, who is the Chair of our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, who will bring us the Measure Q presentation. CFAC is the oversight body for that. Barbara, thank you for chairing that committee, and we look forward to your report this evening.
Thank you. Is this on? Thank you for having me here, and I have a quick PowerPoint presentation I will go over quickly. Feel free to interrupt or wait till the end if you have any questions. I'm reporting for the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and this is our annual report of the Measure Q expenditures for the last fiscal year. So not only am I here to report what the expenditures and what our Citizens Committee review was, but I also wanted to take a few seconds to tell a little bit about the history of this Measure Q. And that was the result of a 2006 ballot initiative for a one-half-cent sales tax increase to be used primarily for public safety, fire, police, streets, and storm drain. It was a general-purpose tax levy. And the reason that's important is that initiative passed with the proviso that the city was required to have an independent Citizens Committee reviewing all the expenditures and then annually reporting on their recommendations and findings. So that's why we're here every year, this time of year after the books are closed, and we're able to review all the expenditures. So that's what we have done. Our committee met in December, and the members of that committee listed there, John Martin, Homer Alexander, Lois Johnson, Bart Beckman, Bilbo's, and David Baton, served till approximately November. And then now we have a new member, Tina Weiner, in the audience this year as well, who recently just joined our committee. So the financial summary, basically, the total revenue was up again this year and has been consistently every year since the recession, which is good, that's a reflection of the sales tax revenue, $1.2 million from that one-half-cent sales tax. Total expenditures for the fiscal year were under that, $1,068,000. And the carryover balance is actually $343,000 as of June 30th of last year. And what that means is the excess of the revenue over the expenses plus last year's carryover balance of approximately $182,000, that brings us to $343,000. Now, $47,000 of that is reserved for debt service, so can't be spent or assigned or allocated, et cetera. But what we call the unassigned fund balance amount is $296,000, and I'll have a comment on that on a later slide. All right, moving right along with where the money was spent, Fire Department, $459,000. That's for those items listed there, the vacation relief personnel, to ensure we always have four Fire Department personnel per shift. Debt service on the new fire station, we have a Department of Agriculture loan, most of you may be aware of, that probably has another 12 to 13 years left on it. Purchase of the fire safety equipment, and debt service for the replacement of the fire engine, so that will be for the next couple of years as well. So that's a significant amount, and that's typical with what we see with the Measure Q expenditures, amounts to about 43% of the revenue this year. Moving right along, we have the street maintenance, which is, for several years now, has been supplementing other revenue sources for street maintenance. It's actually half a million dollars this year, PMP, pavement management plan, the majority of that. And then also the Police Department, that was a little lower this year, $108,000 standby pay, I think some body cameras, equipment, new vehicle payment, that's for the SRO officer's vehicle for the school district, and that total is $108,000. And then this year, we didn't have any Measure Q requests or expenditures for the storm drains. So interestingly, the street maintenance and the fire, they're both in the 40%, so totally, that's about 90%, another 10% for the Police Department, and that's where the money was spent this year. Okay. So, basically, after the commission, the CFAC, we call it, met in December, we approved, reviewed all the expenditures for the past fiscal year, approved them all as consistent with the voter initiative. The carryover and unallocated cash, some years we make recommendations where those monies should be spent just as a recommendation. This year, we didn't. Our recommendation was defer that balance until the mid-year budget review occurs and then determine for the, our leadership and staff to determine how that $296,000 should be spent, or maybe some of it carried forward. And then our other recommendation, obviously, is to continue progress on the funding categories identified in the Measure Q ballot initiative. Some other CFAC accomplishments during the year, briefly, detailed review, recommendation of the city's comprehensive annual financial report, that's the CAFR, and this is the second year the city has done that. They've received awards for it from last year. So we try to help as another set of eyes looking at that report and making some recommendations for staff. You'll hear more about that, I'm sure, later in your agenda. Review all the quarterly reports with feedback, the budget reports to the finance staff. We have also reviewed, made some recommendations for the WRF capital budget quarterly reports, quarterly investment reports, that's a pretty straightforward report, but we do provide a review of that. And then we've done some miscellaneous oversight recommendations as requested, made some suggestions to the advisory body handbook, which you have taken, thank you very much. And we also have been working for two years on the Budget Brief, little tablet, or brochure, I should say. And we are open to suggestions. It's a lot of information. We originally had a public workshop two years ago in the summer, and it's a lot of information. We're trying to summarize into high-level pie charts or whatever, so citizens do get a little better feel. So we're open for suggestions on that. So, in summary, I think the good points are the tax revenues increasing, we like that, that's a positive. And I think there's a very good balance of some fixed payment commitments in the Measure Q spending, with a lot of discretionary income as well, the fixed payments being the fire engine, the debt service on the police station primarily, and the fourth, fire personnel. So, other than that, we are open to any suggestions. We're happy to continue our review of these and any other. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to entertain them.
Barbara, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your leadership on CFAC. And I just wanted to commend the group for not only this report, but, as we'll talk about later, the review of the CAFR and the excellent work that the committee does, very active, very involved, very detail-oriented, and I feel very excited about the oversight that you provide for us as a city council. Any questions for Barbara? Yes?
I do not have any questions.
Or comments?
I just wanted to echo the mayor's comments. Just another excellent job. We're so proud of the work that you've done this year and how much help you've been to the council, and also to keeping the public informed of, you know, these very important financial issues. So thank you for all your hard work. We truly appreciate it and for your leadership.
Great. Any other comments? Yes, Dawn?
I'll just concur and say thank you. I know what that's like, so I very much appreciate it.
Thank you all. And also, I didn't mention, it is a team effort. It's not me individually by any means, even though I've done this for almost 10 years now. But our CAFR Subcommittee this year was John Martin and Lois Johnson and Dave Baton assisted, I believe, as well. And John and Lois really have a lot of detailed CFO experience in municipal, so I think that really helps when we have that level of expertise on our committee. So thanks for the recognition.
Great, Barbara. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Next up is our business spot. Each council meeting, we invite a new business in the community to come forward and give us information about their business. Tonight, we have Anna Patel from Hermit Crab Jewelry Store. Anna, welcome. Glad you're here tonight.
Hi.
Tell us a little bit about your business and...
Hi. It is the Hermit Crab. It's a kitchen store. It's kind of like a housewares-for-homebodies kind of a deal. So we're pretty, pretty new. Yeah, all the kitchen basics, and then we'll be doing probably some demos soon with some of the more fun gadgets, and there's sort of a rotating gift, array of gifts, you know, for kind of the person who has everything, or if you just love to cook.
So here's a couple of prompts for you. So your location, again, is?
Oh, we're on 898 Main Street, Suite C, so straight across from the siren, in the same building as the jewelry store.
Great. Okay, and your hours of operation?
Thursday through Sunday right now, about 11:00 to 6:00.
11:00 to 6:00, Thursday through Sunday. And do you have a website?
We do. It's thehermitcrab.shop.
Thehermitcrab.shop?
Yep.
Great. And phone number?
805-225-1110. So you can always call ahead.
Well, thank you. Welcome, and we're glad you're open for business, and we'll see you soon.
Thanks.
All right. Have a good evening. Thanks for coming. We have, I think, a number of folks here for item C3 with the concurrence with council, if you're okay. I'd like to move that to C1 before I open a general public comment. Is that reasonable? Is that okay? Everybody agree? Okay, great. So for those of you that may want to speak on C1, that will come up right after general public comment. So if you, if you don't need to speak during general public comment, that item will follow immediately thereafter, and we won't hold you late into the evening. So with that, I'm going to open up general public comment. This is a public comment for any items on the agenda for which you cannot stay and you'd like to make remarks, or anything in general you'd like to bring forward to the city council. So general public comment is open. I'll start with, I do have some slips. I'll start with Shirley Frazier. Shirley, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, distinguished council members. I am Shirley Frazier. I'm a resident here of Morro Bay, homeowner in the very immediate neighborhood, in fact, just next door. And I wanted to speak to the homeless and transient population this evening. I have been a homeowner for 23 years, so I've been here a while. The community dinners are an admirable idea being held here to feed our homeless and transient population, but it is coming with negative consequences to our immediate homeowners here, and I wanted to make you aware of that. In the last 30 days, from January 10th until yesterday, February 10th, a 30-day period, the incidents have been rising at an alarming rate. I can speak personally to five police incidents for myself and my immediate neighbors, and if you count the assault that was here a week ago, Monday on the 3rd, at the dinner, that brings it to six. That is a very high rate compared to any of the 23 years that I've lived here. Again, personal experience of what's been happening, we've had transient homeless people that have come from this area, been brought into the area for the dinners, onto our property. We've had trespassing, defecation on our property, vandalism, people jumping the fences, attempted break-in at my home, and last night, the culmination was a break-in and entering of another residence. Again, I do believe that it's the goodness of our heart to help the homeless people, but to continue to do it here is very concerning to me, especially with the talk of increasing perhaps those services to those people. I do remember back when it was held at Lila Kaiser Park, which is a much less densely populated area as far as residents, and this, here, with the immediate proximity, we're just undergoing a lot of issues. Police are involved. I've done fencing, we've done lighting, we're involved in neighborhood watch, so it's not that we aren't doing our part. But I also work full-time, and I'm not here during the day. And as one instance, just to give you, I've installed cameras also. One of the situations just happened when I went into Slow last night, within less than a two-hour period, and they had already broken into my neighbor's home. So I would like for you to consider, before ramping up more things here, even if it were held at the community center, that's a far less densely populated area for homeowners. We are the homeowners that pay the taxes. We've been here supporting the local businesses in good times and bad, and I would appreciate you taking a look at this. I would also appreciate having it be put on, perhaps, a future council agenda, so that more of the residents here would know if things were going to be expanded, because I am very concerned. I plan to spend the rest of my life here, retire here. And I know I'm just one homeowner at this point speaking, but I wanted to let you know as things came to a culmination last night.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Very much. Thank you. Next up for general public comment is Linda Winters, also known as Mobile Home Park Linda. Welcome, Linda.
Good evening, everyone. And before I get started with anything, Happy Valentine's Day a couple days soon. I am Mobile Home Park Linda, and when last we met on January 28th, I stood before you all and stated the possible goals we wish to attain in 2020 regarding mobile home parks. They were as follows: Building a strong line of communication within the 15 mobile home parks. I'm checking that one off. We've already started. Hoping we can begin to revamp the rent control ordinance. That was one. Also, promoting voter registration within the mobile home park residents. That was two. And three, learning and communicating about our new source of energy from the Monterey Bay Community Power Source. I figured I had accomplished, if I accomplished just a portion of these items throughout the year, I would be doing quite well. Well, during the council's bi-ol break, three things happened. Number one, I was approached by the city to start a dialogue about the rent control revamp. Number two, sitting directly in front of me that night was Monterey Bay's Community Powers Customer Relations Person, Ms. Liz Dunsmore. She spoke with me during the break, sent me a wealth of information concerning sub-metering in mobile home parks, and much, much more. Number three, voter registration. Also in that meeting, in that audience, in that meeting, Cindy Baton, speaking about voter registration in both English and Spanish, gave me her contact information. Well, so three of my four goals were in some way addressed in the meeting, and the meeting was only half over. I started thinking about, what should I ask for next? Because of these items, I couldn't have had a better birthday celebration, which, by the way, was the day after the last meeting on January 29th. Life in Morro Bay has been really, really good for me in the past 26 years, which I also celebrated that anniversary on January 31st. January was pretty busy. I am right here in Morro Bay, and I intend to stay here forever and ever, and I want to thank all of you for being such wonderful friends to all of us. And, by the way, Happy Valentine's Day. I did say that. And a little PS, everybody get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up for public comment is Terry, Terry, it's Terry Simons. It looks like Owens, Terry, so I'm going to have you. I know you, are you a doctor?
No.
Well, you are now. Okay. Welcome, Terry.
Doctor of public comment. Good evening. My name's Terry Simons, resident of Morro Bay. This is the open comment. Oh, the clock is running. I just asked for a minute, so you can run that up.
We'll stop you.
Couple of quick things. First of all, I want to thank the council for approving funds to augment the city's administrative's office to be able to respond to public requests for information. I have started to take advantage of that, and so far, so good. I'm learning that I have to ask the question very, very succinctly and very pointedly to get the answer that I might want to get. My other concern is, is that it seems like the city attorney is weighing in on a lot of my questions, and so that may be coming out of a different budget, but you'll work that out. Secondly, I really appreciated CFAC's work on the budget. I'm going to comment more on the budget later in the meeting, but I really enjoyed the presentation, and I especially enjoyed the written portion that was included with the staff report on that item. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Appreciate it. Next up for general public comment is Erica Crawford, our chamber CEO. Welcome, Erica.
Thank you. Not sure I can get that to work. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council and staff. Erica from the chamber, just wanted to let you all know that it's been buzzing at the chamber office. I thought I'd give you a sample of our day in the life. Just today alone, we had inquiries from a local Realtor who is transitioning into commercial real estate with a client scouting Morro Bay locations. We had a local gas station manager asking about sales trends and ideas to improve their interior retail business, and we had phone calls about upcoming workshops and trainings that the chamber's hosting. We also served about a dozen visitors in person, asking for recommendations on things to do, places to stay, and upcoming events. There are a couple of upcoming events that the chamber's hosting. Tomorrow, we're doing a seminar on the Cal Savers Retirement Program at 8:00 AM at the Inn at Morro Bay. Thursday, our newly-formed Ambassador's Committee is hosting two hosting two ribbon cuttings, one for Kathy Novak Consulting at the chamber at 9:30, and a second at Skipper's Brew Coffee House on the Embarcadero at 9:50. All are welcome. And Women Making Waves, our series, is making its return. On February 20th, we're celebrating women in endurance sports and lifestyle fitness. Some familiar faces to you. Samantha Pruitt will be there, Sandy Twist, and a host of others. And then we are planning our March and April workshops and honing in on customer service with our partners at SCOR, the Women's Business Center, and SBDC. I also wanted to share that our Development Director, Lisa, and I just returned from a conference at the Western Association Chamber Executives, where we spent three days with 400 of our industry peers from Texas all the way to Hawaii. We attended sessions on economic development, membership benefit enhancement, workforce development, governmental affairs, and engaging the next generation of business leaders. Despite our travel, we were also able to complete and submit the requested proposal on a relocation of the visitor center, so that's currently under review with the T-Bid. And then finally, I just wanted to thank all of you who attended the gala on January 31st. It was a special night, not only for our honorees, but also for the 2020 Chamber Board, who was installed, and it was made possible by a handful of sponsors, including Castle Wind, Corolla Engineers, Angle and Associates Insurance, Current Networks, The Natural Healing Center, Poppy Boutique, Casa de Flores, Local Hoteliers, Hemant and Jalpa Patel, and Kelsey C. Canyon Minions. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica, for the update. Appreciate that. And next up for general public comment is Mimi Goldberg. Mimi, welcome. Or not. Oh, there you are. Didn't see you over there.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Mimi Goldberg, and I'm here to address the homelessness. I feel Morro Bay needs to get together, probably with board supervisors, on a focused investment. Start using our resources and resourcefulness to meet the homeless problem head-on. Governor Newsom said he is going to deploy another 100 trailers by the end of March. It has not been determined which communities will receive them. City Council, this is a chance to also make the voters happy, because homelessness is what people vote on. Approximately 11 people can fit in, like, one of the trailers. It's up to the local governments to decide about water and hookups and stuff like that. Zara Newsom also included in his proposal to spend $1.4 million in the new state budget. He also called for allocating $750 million to a new California access to housing services and support rent subsidis, and support rent subsidis, subsidies, and develop affordable stable housing. Kaiser Permanente donated $25 million to the fund, which the governor set up as a public-private partnership. They have a site, too. Governor Newsom issued to evaluate excess land for use for homeless shelters on, in counties and cities. And there's a, it shows how they base the map on it, and there's the degrees, and like, it shows right here, there's a dot on the map. It shows right here by the power plant. And, you know, there's a big parking lot down there that nobody even uses. I don't know, but the cities that are using properties are using trial trans mostly, prisons, military-related, and I think we would be self-sustainable. And it was really cold last night, and we got up to go to school. We still made it to our environmental science class. And so anyhow, thanks, you guys, and we're welcoming the Big Bad and the Ugly this weekend down at The Rock. Awesome. And also the Slocow Open, New World Surf League, which is part of the World Surf League, and that'll be here on the 27th through March 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Mimi. General public comment is open for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay, or other general items. Any further? I have two tie goes to Mr. Weiss. John, welcome.
Thank you, John Weiss, resident and business owner in Morro Bay, and happened to sit in the front row, so I guess I got an advantage there. My apology to whoever was behind me. I wanted to just basically comment, generally, we lost an icon on Thursday, Captain Stu, and my understanding is that there will be a remembrance for him on Saturday the 15th at noon at Tidlin's Park. I want to tell you that I had an experience that was very memorable for me, because I had my grandson, my wife, with me on one of his cruises with our members of our church. So it was, it was obvious that he was very friendly and very knowledgeable of the Bay, and I think we're all going to miss him, and obviously my condolences to those who were close to him. Thank you.
Thanks, John, for bringing that forward. I appreciate it. General public comment is still open for items on the agenda for which you can't stay, or other items. And that was the guy that tied you, John, so you could talk to him later. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be short and sweet. Because, because the council has expressed an interest in transparency, it just occurs to me that the CFAC went to a lot of work to put together their annual report. And in the interest of making that known to the community that's not mostly here, is it possible to send out a summary of that report with the water and sewer bills, so that people can have two sentences? This is what Measure Q was, and this is how it was spent in the last year, so that the public at large can be aware of CFAC money and how it's being spent. And that's my only comment. There's a lot of work that goes into that, and I think the public deserves to know. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate that. General public comment is open for items on the agenda for which you can't stay, or other general items. Seeing Linda. Welcome, Linda.
Good evening. Something has been bothering me for a while. I've noticed during city council meetings where you'll be discussing an item, and the mayor will ask, you know, the other council people if they have any questions of what's been presented, and then frequently, we'll hear someone say, "Oh, I got them answered in an email. I sent an email, and I have my questions answered." What that does is that gives the citizens out here and at home a disadvantage to whatever your questions were about this item that might be on the agenda that you're discussing. I don't believe that the citizens of Morro Bay elected you to do your business via email. I believe that they elected you to sit here on these Tuesday night meetings and discuss them openly, so that we have an idea of what in the world you're thinking and doing, and what kind of questions that you ask, because how are we supposed to read your mind? And if this is going to continue, I might suggest that your questions to whomever the person is on staff, or Corolla, or whoever, that your questions and their answers become part of the record, so that we could read them ahead of time, so that we have an idea of what it is that you'd be discussing. Because I really appreciate Mr. Heading, who does, I mean, Mr. Heller, who does bring his questions to the items, and he's asking them, and it's, you know, there's transparency going on. So that's been kind of bothering me, and I wanted to bring that to the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment is still open for items on the agenda for which you can't stay, or anything else. Seeing, oh, Eric's not. Welcome.
Hi, Melanie Williams-Mahan. I'm going to bring up something we talked about before, and that's the drainage ditch behind my house. I called County Health, their environmental department, about the drainage ditch, and it's next to the high school as well. I spoke to the high school, and it is their responsibility. However, the school has no money to address this. Environmental Health said anything in the city of Morro Bay is the responsibility of Morro Bay. Considering that the ditch is a source of mosquitoes and flies, and that mosquitoes are deadlier than ever, I think by ignoring this situation, the city is endangering the lives of residents and those students. Could I possibly suggest that we engage some volunteers and civic groups to come forward and help deal with this problem? I realize on paper that you're not responsible, but we are citizens of Morro Bay, and we look to you to keep us safe. I also looked at the 2019-2020 City Council Goals and Objectives. Would this fall under Goal Number Two, Public Infrastructure, and Goal Number Three, Action A, where you talk about volunteer groups coming in to help with us? I also have a, so that's all I'm going to say about that. I'm looking, the high school is supposed to call me back and see if they can do anything besides just spray, because they're spraying, and it comes right back, so there's really no point in them even trying this again, because all you're doing then is putting a bunch of toxins out there that aren't helping anybody. It's not killing the mosquitoes, but it's not good for us either. Also, I was looking at these goals, and one of the things, I have a question about Goal Number One, which is, let me see, sorry, our achieve economic and fiscal sustainability. What's happening with the cannabis stores? It seems like they've been here for two years, and it seems like we could use the money that they could provide with their sales. I don't know. I just, I'm just wondering. It's like, it seems like we have a lot of money for certain things, and we don't have a lot of money for things that could be really important, like public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for items either on the agenda for which you can't stay, or any items. Surveying the room, seeing none. I'm going to close that public comment, bring it back to council. Couple of questions perhaps to answer. First one, Chief Cox, any, oh. You look different tonight, Chief Cox. Any, any comments regarding the issues that may be happening along with our Monday night meals that you might be aware of? And maybe I'm putting you on the spot. Can you possibly give us a little update on that?
So a few things. I've had meetings with the volunteer group that puts on and volunteers specifically with the community dinners regarding some upticks in issues. And I know through seven, for the last seven years, they've had very few number of incidents, but I think that that trend is unfortunately going to be changing, just based on behaviors that we've seen in all communities. As far as the visitors to the area, we have seen an increase in some calls for service, and we can address those one at a time. And in speaking with, with the nearby residents, we've got a game plan, and really, it's just a matter of trying to mitigate, you know, the damages or anything else that occurs trespassing. And so we are, we'll work on a case-by-case basis, but I think the reality is, is as these dinners continue, we will, just based on trends, see an increase in issues, and that's just something that, as law enforcement, we're going to have to deal with.
Do we routinely have, during the, those times since there is an uptick, do we have maybe routine visits or presence of our local police force there?
So that was, that was one of the conversations that was had with the volunteer group that heads up the dinners. We had a, an after incident, we had an incident, and we kind of had an after-incident briefing, and that was discussed with allowing us to come in and to be a part of the dinners, whether it be, you know, here to answer questions. But that's, that's difficult on some levels, because our presence can dissuade certain individuals from coming and receiving those meals, which we certainly don't want to do, but at the same time, it's kind of that fine line, you know? Can we come in and be welcomed and have everybody else feel welcome? That's certainly something that we would like to do, but it's going to be kind of a little paradigm shift for some of our guests.
Thank you. Let's see. Let me go to item. Any, Councilmember McPherson, any new report this week on the homelessness discussion with the county? Ms. Goldberg brought up, again, the issue of funding.
Nothing new has happened. We are aware. We are working with the supervisors to try to deal with the problem on a regional basis. They have formed an encampment subcommittee, and Morro Bay has represented on that, and we are trying to address the issue in a way that makes sense, and, and spread the resources that we know are coming throughout the region. So I'm confident that we will do something here as well. And we won't know, though, for a couple of months yet, so nothing definite.
Okay. And perhaps I'll ask Mr. Collins, any response to the email questions that council often asks on issues related to the council meetings, perhaps that aren't asked publicly? Do you have any thoughts about that, or any response to that? Perhaps our council has a response.
Yeah, I mean, we, those correspondents are a matter of public, public record, so that's one way to access that. You know, some council members choose to ask the same questions that they've asked in, ahead of time, and some come forward, depending on what the issue is, with, with questions that haven't been asked, because, you know, there's new information being gleaned all the time on these items. So staff is prepared to do whatever council desires with regard to those questions.
Thank you for that, and...
May I add something to that?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes. My practice is to get the questions to, to the staff ahead of time, so that they can come prepared with answers to the meeting. That's the reason that I do that, and I specifically say no need to answer these for me, but I just want them to be prepared at the meeting. And I will always ask questions that I think are relevant for the public to know, so I really don't try to hide anything.
Thank you. And Rob, any, I know we reported maybe last meeting on the drainage ditch issue. I realize it's a school district property issue, but can you offer any insight about, do we have volunteers available to help, or any comment?
We'll also reach out to the school district and see what could be done. Volunteers would need the school district's permission to work on that property. Also, it's not city-controlled property, and I'm sure they have a similar liability concern with volunteers working on their property as we do when we engage volunteers, so...
And add to that, I mean, public health is a county function. Not trying to get into a, you know, passing-the-buck situation, but they do have vector control. That is not, that is not a city function, vector control being mosquitoes and other, other species like that. So they're sort of tasked overall with that, kind of regulating those populations and informing the public about issues. And yes, it does fall in the lap of the school district, but if there's a way that city can help with coordinating volunteers, we'd certainly be open to that, but it would be, a place to start would be the school.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. With that, that moves us to item A, Consent Agenda. Any members of the public wishing to come forward regarding consent items only, please do so now. Public comment is open on consent item. That's items A1 through A4. Surveying the room, seeing none. Bring it back to council. Any items to pull, or possibly recommendation for approval?
I move we approve items on the consent agenda, items A1 through 4.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson to approve the consent agenda items, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
So again, thank you. For those of you that are just coming in, we are moving the agenda around per council consent asked earlier. We're going to consider item C3 first, so this is item C3 on the agenda, discussion concerning an ordinance to regulate tobacco, vaping, and/or second-hand smoke, including potentially a tobacco retailer licensing program, the sale of e-cigarettes or vaping products, and enhancing the city's current second-hand smoke regulation by a smoke-free policy for multi-unit housing. Recommendation, again, tonight, is to continue the ongoing dialogue with regard to this issue, and give direction to staff regarding the recrafting or crafting of the ordinance that we've seen now twice, and that was tabled at our last meeting. So with that, I will turn it over So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Collins, our counselor, Chris Niermar. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, tonight we have a staff report that lists a number of discussion items for secondhand smoke, tobacco control, and vaping ordinance. The staff report, at the beginning, of course, recommends that council discuss and then consider providing direction to staff on bringing back an ordinance. This will be the fifth discussion council has had on secondhand smoke and vaping. The fiscal impact that could potentially come from this report is, one, if a tobacco retailer license was adopted, then there would be costs associated with that. However, it would be strongly suggested that the city recover all those costs through a fee for that tobacco retailer license, so there's no extra cost to the city. Another fiscal impact is that the possible prohibition of the retail sale of vaping products in part or in whole could have an undetermined economic impact on the city in terms of sales tax revenue coming into the general fund. The background of tonight's item, as I mentioned on Page 1 of the staff report, which is Page 111 of the agenda packet, is city council has reviewed and considered the regulation of tobacco, vaping, and secondhand smoke at four prior council meetings. On October 8th, 2019, a comprehensive staff report was presented to council by the city manager concerning options related to local tobacco and vaping regulations. The gist of that meeting was to talk about American Lung Association recommendations to improve our local secondhand smoke ordinance, and also to talk about the potential health risks from vaping and whether or not the city council would like to prohibit vaping products being sold in the city. On November 12th, 2019, an ordinance consistent with the direction from council at that meeting was brought back for a first reading or an introduction. And further direction was sought on multiple issues at that meeting night for the ordinance itself. On our December 10th, consistent with the direction from the second council meeting, an ordinance was brought back, and it had some further changes to it. There was more discussion that night. On January 14th, council had further discussion about a possible ordinance and asked for staff to come back with a staff report that lists the discussion issues. And so I've tried to prepare the staff report that provides a roadmap for what I see are the discussion issues that could generate direction to staff for an ordinance to come back. If you look at discussion on Page 112 of the staff report, number one, the American Lung Association recommendations. This was the genesis of the original secondhand smoke report back in October. In short, the American Lung Association is recommending that the city adopt some stricter secondhand smoke regulations, stricter than what's currently in the local code. Those consist largely of two changes. The first one would be restrictions on multi-unit residences, and it lists here in the staff report what those restrictions would be. This was in the original ordinance presented back in November. Second recommendation is a tobacco retailer license program, which essentially would require another license from tobacco retailers. With that license comes the ability to enforce, insofar as if the license is revoked for violation of various rules, then they can't sell tobacco. It's recommended strongly that a fee be levied to pay for the cost of that program. Those are the two main recommendations from the American Lung Association. You can see also that I've listed here on staff report Page 113 of the entire agenda packet, that there are a number of other issues the ALA asks the city to consider. One, prohibiting the sale of tobacco products in retail establishments that also have a pharmacy. And then D, cigars, prohibiting the sale of certain cigars. E, locations, potentially impose retailer location restrictions. When this was discussed before, there was interest in this, but we indicated that we'd need further review by staff to figure out what this would mean in terms of zoning and amendment of the zoning code. And right now, that's something that's currently being reviewed, and that could be brought back if council is still interested in doing that. And then flavors, whether or not we should be prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products. One of the issues with flavors is whether or not there should be an exception for menthol, which is a traditional historic flavor that's been associated with cigarettes. And also, should smokeless tobacco have its flavored products be prohibited or allowed? So I outlined here the ALA recommendations in one, and I would suggest that council go through those during discussion and provide direction on which one of these recommendations council would like to see in an ordinance. If you also turn to the attachments, you'll see Attachment 2 is the one-page Slow County grade for cities in the county from the ALA. And you can see right there, coming off of the Morro Bay grade, where we've received zeros, these are the recommendations that are in the staff report to consider. The second part of the discussion staff would like council to engage in is what to do, if anything, about vaping products. As council knows, starting with the October 8th staff report, there's been a robust discussion on what would be the best response to what is acknowledged by most as a national public health crisis with vaping products causing deaths and serious illness. I'd like to point out that since the last report in January, the federal government has now implemented a partial vaping ban on the sale of vape products. As of early February, the federal government has prohibited the sale of certain flavored vaping products, basically the ones that are used most often by minors, meaning that they have cartridges or they come with pre-filled pods. And that prohibition will remain in effect until the FDA concludes whether or not it should become permanent or they should lift that prohibition. On the last page of the staff report, that would be Page 114 of the agenda packet, I have a number of items here to start the discussion on how to address, if at all, the national health crisis with vaping products. On Section A, one of the recommendations to consider would be simply the prohibition of all vaping products. That was in one of the ordinances we brought back recently. Two, consider whether or not a prohibition should be limited to flavored vaping products, and if so, how do we address menthol? And would we want to take the limited approach the federal government has taken of basically prohibiting flavored one-time-use pods, which are most attractive to minors? C, vitamin E acetate. Council seemed pretty clear prior that any vaping products that possibly could be allowed to be sold definitely should not be allowed to contain vitamin E acetate, which has been linked to a lot of the deaths nationwide with vaping products. And then D, if council were to direct staff to prohibit the retail sale of some or all vaping products, when would we want that prohibition to come into effect? A lot of the discussions prior were about providing time for local retail establishments to have a limited window within which to dispose of the vaping products they have in their stores if we were to prohibit them at a certain date. And then finally, a last idea that came to the forefront during discussions was an ID check. And this is on section... This is number three on the last page of the staff report. I'd ask council to provide direction not only on the American Lung Association recommendations, vaping, but also whether we want an ID check. Legal research has concluded that it is lawful for local government to impose an ID check on all purchasers of tobacco products in part or in whole, so that could be added to an ordinance. And if the council adopts a tobacco retailer license program, then the enforcement would simply be that if there is violations of the ID check requirements, then you could either have your license suspended or revoked. I'd ask council to consider these three areas of discussion and provide direction to staff on an ordinance to bring back. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for the presentation. Council, I'm going to open it up to any questions you might have for Chris before we enter into discussion, and I'll take each of the items. I took notes on what staff is asking us to look at. We'll just take them one by one and go down. But are there any general questions with regard to the staff report or presentation? Yes, Councilmember Heller.
I have one, and it's kind of the elephant in the room, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't want to rock the boat, because we've worked a lot to get to this point. But I'm wondering, aren't we missing the vaping issue with cannabis CBD and THC products being not in this ordinance?
That is a policy decision. Previous direction was to exclude cannabis vaping from the prohibition on retail sales. And that is entirely up to council, whether or not they would want to direct staff once again to...
So we could agendize that in the future and talk about that as a separate issue, if the council wanted to.
Yes, or council could simply stick with the prior direction or could change direction. But yes, to be clear, the original vaping ban that council asked for and was brought back in an ordinance in November, it prohibited the retail sale of all vaping products with the exception of cannabis. My understanding is the intention was to, first of all, allow the new retail establishments to get off the ground, and second of all, since cannabis is regulated more strictly than tobacco by the state, there was an expectation that it would remain regulated. But that's a pure policy decision. It's up to council.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember McPherson, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. On Page 113 of the staff report, when you use the term flav... This is F, flavors, prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products. Are you talking just about tobacco here? Because I know in our ordinance, we combine tobacco and vaping. And is this just tobacco? Or does it also include vaping products that contain tobacco?
The council member is correct that we need direction on both of those issues. If, for example, the American Lung Association recommendations were adopted, then we need direction on just tobacco. If council also wants to adopt a vaping products prohibition in part or in whole, then we additionally would need direction on flavored vaping products. But they are two different issues insofar as council chooses to address them separately.
Okay, thank you.
Questions to my... Yes, Councilmember Addis, yes.
Yeah, thank you for including the information on the federal ban. And maybe you already said this and I missed it, but what about in the county and surrounding cities? Do you know... And state parks? Do you know if there's been changes over the past five discussions that we've had with other agencies locally?
Well, just recently, the state government has prohibited the use of vaping products in state parks and beaches across the board. My understanding is that within the county, I don't think any other city so far have moved forward with any aggressive vaping ban. Perhaps they have? City manager?
So the city of Royal Grande, city of Slow, and county, unincorporated areas, have banned all vaping product sales. And in addition, Royal Grande has actually made it, I think, a misdemeanor for youth who possess or found in possession of vaping products.
So is that then more restrictive than the federal ban, since the federal ban is like a partial?
Yeah, the federal ban applies to certain types of flavored vaping products, but not all e-cigarettes, like those cities do.
Okay. And we have state parks here in Morro Bay?
We have several state parks. So that would sort of be an extension of what we already have in place, for the most part. Most public spaces, you can't smoke or vape in the city.
Okay.
Almost all public spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis, no questions? Chris, could you perhaps just be a little more clear about the recent action taken by the federal government? And I'm thinking particularly of flavors other than the ones they have identified and large-volume drop containers. Are those part of that federal ban, or could you just expand a little bit?
The federal ban is basically on pre-filled pod devices, meaning that if you walk into a vape shop and ask for a vape to be handed over to you that is ready to use as soon as you walk out of the store, then those that are flavored are prohibited. There are, however, a lot of vaping products that involve actually putting the actual vape juice on your own into the product, and it's, you know, continual use. You know, you refill it. So basically, the one-time use of vaping products, the federal government has prohibited the ones that have flavors in them. The intent, apparently, is that the minors and youth that use vaping products take the real easy-to-use ones that have flavors. And for folks that, you know, perhaps are using vaping products less impulsively, you know, they're going to take the time to fill up the vaping product with the, you know, refillable juice. But it's a limited prohibition, to be clear. The federal prohibition is limited to just the real easy-to-use flavored products.
And are you aware if there are any new products that have come out as a result of this that are designed to circumvent the federal ban?
I'm not aware of any that have been specifically designed to circumvent this ban. I would not be surprised with all of the commercial ingenuity out there that if somebody could come up with something that technically meets the federal definition of what's allowed but provides the same function as what is trying to be prohibited.
Thank you. So no further questions? I will open up public comment. This is Item C3, actually, our first item. I have... General public comment is open. I do have speaker slips. I'll start with those. First up is Tracy Thies. Tracy, welcome.
Hello, good evening. I'm Tracy Thies. I work at the San Luis Obispo County Office of Education. I'm the...
Little bit more into the mic, if you could.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I'm Tracy Thies. I'm the Tobacco Use Prevention Education Coordinator at the San Luis Obispo County Office of Education. I provided a little packet of information for you tonight, just so that you could refer to it, since there's a lot of information out there. Our grants do have a website that I have provided a resource page for you. In there, there's curriculum and different resources that we use for the schools. In that information, you'll also find through the curriculum link, direct links to the Stanford Tobacco Prevention Toolkit, as well as a Cannabis Awareness Prevention Toolkit as well. So they've created both of those, in which are resources that we do rely on. The next thing in the packet that I provided you was some of the data from the Healthy Kids Survey for Morro Bay High School. That was the 1718 year that is being currently taken in the next few weeks, so we will see some new data coming from that. It is anticipated that it will increase, just because of the large popularity of it, but we'll see what those results look like. The ones that we did have, 29% of ninth graders and 36% of 11th graders had, within the past 30 days, ever used an electronic cigarette. So we did have a fair amount of students who had tried it at least once. Then you'll see on the next page, this also, like, if they've used it over lifetime, what type of percent... One time to four or more times. And we had, again, some of that data broken down for you. And then we also had a perception of how they felt that it was easy to... Fairly easy and very easy to get it. 63% of the ninth graders felt it's very easy. 11th graders, there was 71% that felt it was fairly easy to very easy. So even if we are looking at an ordinance that helps prevent youth to getting that direct access to it from a retail market, we do hope and encourage that you do move forward on your ordinance. The next thing's in the packet I provided was some... CDE, California Department of Ed, provides us from the 2B office, some of the school e-cigarette toolkits, and there's some resources and things. This is accessible on our webpage as well. The next packet part does talk about what nicotine is. Our main concern is just the effects of youth development on their brain. So you can... I just printed up some of the main slides from the tobacco toolkit, and the parts that their body are affected, the brain, the lungs, increased acid reflux, also the fight-or-flight response with their heartbeat is increased. The next page also looks at some of the irritations that they get from the chemicals in their throat, eyes, and ears... I mean, sorry, ears, eyes, and throat irritation is also common from this. So that's the next part of the packet there. The next one says some of this information. Is that the end of my time? Okay. So it just goes on to give you some information of what chemicals are in there, and then some of the concerns of recycling these products. Where are we recycling it? And they're going to the oceans. And then some of the youth truth information about jewels are the last part of your packet.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the information. Next up for general public comment is Jeff Kallwalder. Close that... Yeah. I see. Ked Wal... Walder. Ked Walder? Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you for this. My name's Jeff Kedwalder. I'm assistant principal at Morro Bay High School. This is my second year at Morro Bay. And I just wanted to kind of give you a school's perspective, perspective of vaping use and drug use on campus currently. So I've been in education for 14 years now, in different states and cities, and I've never... I've seen trends... And I've never, I've seen trends and things go with students. They come and go. But I've never seen something like vaping before in my career, with how quickly it took off and how quickly it became popular, and how widespread use there was throughout our campus. When I came onto staff at Morro Bay a year and a half ago, I was told, you know, we have great students, they don't get in trouble a lot, we don't have a lot of drug use, and this is true, we do have great students. But last year, we had a massive increase in the use of vaping products, both tobacco-based and THC-based. And one of the biggest problems was, a lot of our students didn't know what they were actually consuming in those products. Some of them thought it was just vape juice, and that's all it was, and with nothing else in it. Most of those students, the product contained nicotine. Other students thought they were just smoking nicotine, but then the product contained THC. And so there was a lot of missed education that the students didn't have about those products. And so we saw that massive increase, and I looked through our data today from last year, and we probably had over 50 incidents that we actually caught. But it was almost daily that you could walk into a bathroom, or into a locker room, or around a building, and you would smell the very fruity-flavored smell of the vape, of those vape juices and those vape flavors. And it's very distinctive. You can really tell what it is when you walk into those restrooms. And so we know it was happening a lot more than what we actually caught. This year, we've had less than 10 incidents that we've actually caught on campus. I've talked to staff, I've talked to students, and they don't see it around as much, but through surveys and polls, we still have over 20% of our students that are using vape products. So they're just not using them on campus. So, or if they are using them on campus, they've gotten better at hiding it. So we're seeing it as a very big issue on our campus. Whether or not we're actually catching the students or not, what we do every time we find a student that has the product on them or is using it, we put them through alcohol and other drug classes to try to get them to stop. We've had students that we didn't even know were using the products come to us and say, "I'm addicted, I need help," because it is such a strong, potent product, that they're getting hooked on it very quickly. So from the school's point of perspective, we would like to do anything possible to get everything off of our campus and out of our students' hands and out of their backpacks. And we know that they have many means of getting it, through friends, through older siblings, through parents, ordering online, through out-of-state websites, out-of-country websites. They can get it through a lot of different places. Thank you again for allowing me to come in tonight.
Thank you for being here. Next up for public comment is Courtney Rasmussen. Courtney, welcome.
My name is Courtney Rasmussen. I work for the San Luis Obispo County Tobacco Control Program. I just wanted to provide a little bit of education regarding the FDA ban and what it does and doesn't accomplish. So the FDA ban does not prohibit these devices that my supervisor, Inger, is actually going to allow you to smell. They are very potent. They are disposable electronic cigarettes. And there are many different forms. These ones are called puff bars. These are very popular amongst youth right now. And so these are not prohibited in the FDA ban, amongst the other disposable electronic cigarettes. There are also, on this sheet, all of the various forms of e-juice that you can buy at the store. There's over 15,000 flavors. These are also not prohibited in the FDA ban. And what this is used is for your mods, your tanks, your pens, your refillable-based systems. So a user would buy one of these systems, or these bigger systems, and they buy their e-juice separately, and they put it into the cartridge and vape that way. So it's not a pre-filled system. Another, so we talk about Juul, how that is our pre-filled cartridge. This little thing often comes pre-filled. But they do make these where they are not pre-filled. And Juul, and Sorin, and a few others are very popular as well amongst youth. And you can buy these not pre-filled. The user would buy their e-juice and then fill it themselves and use it that way. And another thing that the FDA ban doesn't do is it does not ban the sale of menthol. So menthol is allowed to be still sold in a pre-filled cartridge or a non-pre-filled, and the user could just buy the e-juice separately. With my time left, I'm going to go super fast over what a comprehensive e-cigarette ban looks like. So first, the first generation of e-cigarettes are these little e-cigarettes. They're called cigalikes. They look just like a traditional cigarette. The butt lights up, it's kind of disposable, or some of them aren't disposable, and you could just insert a new cartridge. The second generation is these pens, and they are refillable. And then the third is the mods. And then the fourth is where we get into the more techie, where they're pre-filled. So a comprehensive ban would ban all of that together and close a lot of the loopholes that the FDA has left open. And it would close other loopholes, like these products. These are just little flavor caps, if I can get it open. So these are little flavor caps. It has a bead in the top, there's no nicotine in this. But if there's loopholes left over, and a user can buy a menthol cigar, a e-cigarette, or a regular flavored tobacco product, they use this. This is kiwi-strawberry. They slip it on top, they squeeze it, and then now they're vaping kiwi-strawberry, no longer just traditional nicotine.
Thank you very much for demonstrating those products. Inger Epinides, Inger, welcome. Yeah, could you pass that basket around, maybe, up here? Thank you for us to see. Appreciate that. Welcome, Inger.
Welcome, thank you, and good evening. You really nailed the name. I guess I've been coming here too often over the past few months.
Frequent flyer.
Yeah, so I wanted to give you a couple updates that were mentioned earlier. One, the city of Slow passed 5-0, a comprehensive e-cigarette ban on January 21st. The Board of Supervisors' policy, which was passed last month, goes into effect on February 13th. So my staff are working closely, doing outreach with local retailers in Los Osos to make sure that everyone understands what these bans mean and making sure that this transition period is as smooth as possible. I wanted to share a few statistics with you on youth vaping in Morro Bay. I know Tracy had already gone over some of these statistics, and I'm sure they're included in the staff report as well. I just put them in a little bit bigger font to reiterate the issue. So these statistics just highlight that youth use and access to tobacco products in Morro Bay is a huge issue. Tracy talked about how prevalent it is in the schools with her statistics. I want to focus on this third one. 23% of tobacco retailers sold to an underage minor when we partnered with the Morro Bay PD back in August. Three retailers isn't a whole lot, but when you think of it, out of 13, that's a huge problem. These three numbers, we would like to see zero across the board. I've been doing this long enough that these numbers have become a little bit numb to me. 36, 28, you know, we keep seeing these numbers go up. We really need to get all three of these numbers back down to zero and do something, everything we can to address it. The bottom panel of this sheet that I shared with you shows, again, some of the national data. Tracy mentioned that we don't have the updated statistics for e-cigarette use among students at Morro Bay. But if you look down at this bottom figure, it shows how strictly correlated sales of e-cigarettes are with youth use. The two data points go hand in hand, and I think it's safe to say that as long as these products stay on the market, we're going to continue to see youth use increase. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to pass around this. Next up for public comment is Julia Alber. Julia, welcome.
My name is Julia Alber. I am the chair of the Slow County Tobacco Control Coalition. I'm also a member of the Center for Health Research. I brought a letter that was passed out that was from the director of the Center for Health Research. I just wanted to bring some pieces of information for you to consider when you're talking specifically about banning e-cigarettes. Inger already kind of addressed this, but I gave you somewhere national in California ride that youth are still purchasing these devices locally. In addition, the majority of people are purchasing these locally, not online. Some people are saying, oh, they just purchase them online. The national research says that only about 20% of e-cigarette users are actually purchasing online, so 80% are being bought locally. Another thing I wanted to bring up that we've heard before is this idea that this might create a black market. There are other places that have actually done more restrictive policies, going further to back, just banning all flavored tobacco products, banning tobacco products, and we do not see any evidence in the research this is creating any type of black market. The final thing I wanted to just bring up is there is this environmental impact. Ecoslow was not able to come, but they did share with me just over the weekend, they were doing a cleanup on Morro Rock, and they found some of these devices at Morro Rock itself. And they still, 30% of what they do on their pickup is tobacco-related. So this is definitely still having an impact on the environment. So taken all together, I really hope that you will consider banning e-cigarette products. We don't really know what's in them. We know that we found different levels of nicotine, different types of chemicals that are known to cause cancer. And we'd really like to take steps not to addict an entire new generation to tobacco products when we've made so much progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up for public comment is Mimi Goldberg. Mimi, welcome. Perhaps not, maybe Mimi is gone. Okay. General public comment is still open. For those of you that didn't sign up, any member wishing to speak, please come on forward. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ben. I'm a tobacco shop owner. I just want a response, like that lady informed me she just said 80% from people guarantee like underage guarantee from tobacco shop. I'm like, I see her sitting next to the tobacco control lady. Tobacco control job is busting those people. Let's go to those 80% and ask them where they guarantee from. And send them again. If they got from my shop, I'm sure my employee will sell her again. Let's bust me and give me fine. I'm sorry, everything they say hold no word. There is nothing about it. They make study-based and nothing. I'm like, there is study from the FDA, there is study from the CDC. I'm like, those real study, real people. But you come to me and telling me I'm like 80% from people underage guarantee from tobacco shops? No, that's not right. The gentleman from the high school said there's a lot of them had THC. I'm like, yeah, that's not coming from the tobacco shop. We didn't have THC in tobacco shops. That's coming from online. That's the problem, is online, not tobacco shops, not retailers. I'm like, there's from the high school? Yes, I feel, there is problem in high school. I'm like, they bust 50 people? What they did for those 50 people? Did they talk to their parent? Did they do anything about it? I'm like, underage people, like 21 is the legal age for smoking. I don't think anyone have a right to tell them you cannot vape if you're over 21. I'm old enough to decide if I want to vape or not. But if I'm under 21 and I got busted at a school vaping, I think we should talk to his parent? We should do something about it. There is problem in the high school, yes. But everybody throwing, high school throwing the blame on me, the retailers. City throwing the blame on me, the retailers. That lady from Office of Education throwing the blame. It's all, that's their job, they need to do their jobs. I'm doing my job. I never got busted for someone minors. I never will. Even like she said, like three businesses did. No one when it's underage. Sometimes you make a mistake. Those three businesses, maybe in like, you know, 20, 30 years, they make one mistake or two mistakes. That's very, very little. I'm like, we make mistakes, but that's not mean we still on it on a daily basis. So, you know, they banned alcohol 100 years ago. Group of people just like them, they fought to ban alcohol. 13 years later was chaos, bad fire on them. 10,000 people lost their life because black market, bathtub gin. That's what's going to happen. And, you know, 87 years later, nobody talking about banning alcohol, because it was a bad thing to do. You want to ban tobacco? It's going to be black market. And what are we going to do next time we have like an adult, he cannot find vape, and he went to online and ordered vape, and you know what? He ordered like bad vape, bad juice, a fake juice, and lost his life. Who to blame then? I sell good stuff, I stand by my stuff, I think we should keep vaping.
Thank you. General public comment for item C3 is still open. Mimi, I think you left and you had a card. Thanks, I'll have Mimi, yeah, go ahead.
Melanie Williams-Mahan. You guys are allowing marijuana vapes, but not allowing your local citizens to sell vapes here. It's kind of like prohibition, I think. What if some kid gets alcohol from somewhere and drinks it? Are we going to start banning alcohol in Morro Bay? I just, I don't think that, I think all we need to do is just ID, like we do with alcohol. And do these retailers have incident, multiple incidents on their records of selling to minors? Do you know? I worked with an at-risk group of teens for two years, and they were stealing the stuff from their parents. So, you know, it seems to me that if the retailers have a clean record, why not keep trusting them? And let them make a living. I don't vape, but I respect the right of these retailers to sell and ID, just like we do with alcohol. If the federal ban stays, the federal government will do what needs to be done. If you get rid of legal sales here, you're endangering the kids because they'll get them online or black market. And that's where we've seen the most, that's where we've seen these deaths. It's all black market stuff. But, you know, they're kids, they're better online than we are, so. And do we know what the stats are on cities that have banned vapes and flavored products? And if they are denied vapes, will they switch to cigarettes? Kind of go old-school? I don't know.
Thank you. Next up, Mimi. Did I see you walk back in? This is for item C3.
Good evening again, you guys, city council. My name's Mimi Goldberg. And I remember at my high school, Locken Yada High, we had a smoking section. My mom would drop me off at the quad, and I'd walk down to the smoking section, and like, remember the movie Grease, how cool he was? I am totally healthy. My daughter's healthy. I actually smoked during my whole pregnancy, and she is like the healthiest girl on the planet. But that's, that was anyhow. These guys, though, I swear, they don't, they don't sell to minors, and if they do, it's, I'm sure they reprimand the salesperson. I also spoke to one of his salesgirls today, and if you guys ban like menthol cigarettes, the elderly population are the ones that buy the most menthol cigarettes, you're going to have the old people driving at night or whatever, you know, going to another town to go get their menthols. I like to smoke the grape, I like to smoke the grape cigars, because they're less expensive, and they supplement my cigarettes. It really helps me get through the month when I buy, they're only $2.50 for a pack of cigars. They're really great. And they really help supplement, and dude, totally distresses me, having a cigarette. It's great. You don't want to see me not have one. No, but thank you, you guys. Think about that, please. About what you're going to vote on, you know, cigarettes, e-cigarettes, menthol, cigars. Thanks.
Thank you. General public comment for item C3 is still open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, do so now. Thank you, and welcome.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Trent Johnson. I'm a resident of San Luis Obispo. But I also work at the Stanford Prevention Research Center and the Stanford University School of Medicine. I emailed the city council members in December, I believe, expressing my regrets that I couldn't attend a previous meeting, but here I am today. I'm not here only as a researcher, I'm also here as an uncle to four young men who have attended Morro Bay High School, do attend, or will attend. They have all relayed to me their concern for vaping at the high school. Particularly resonant are the concerns about vaping and sports participation. In fact, one of my nephews expressed concern that during halftime during one of his games, the athletes got together and all vaped for good luck. Of course, he abstained, or so he tells me. But this is particularly concerning, student athletes who should be protecting their bodies, consuming a product that we know can kill you. But I think we've already heard enough about vaping. I'm here to implore you to reconsider the ban on all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes. I think leaving- I think leaving that on the stores, in the shelves, fails to protect our youth from something that is even more deadly. Banning vaping products plays right into the hands of big tobacco, who is glad to see the profits derived from vaping, something that they have been unable to get a stronghold on besides their purchase in Juul. And they would much rather see people turn to flavored cigars that can be had as cheap as two for 99 cents. I know that you have included in the draft ordinance a minimum purchase price for single cigars, but what we've seen in other jurisdictions nationally is that when you put a minimum pack size of five, for example, like you currently have, the tobacco companies are glad to lower the price of a five-pack to $2.99, which is cheaper than my child's hot lunch. Furthermore, this is a health equity issue. We are banning a product, vaping, that is known to be used based on California student tobacco survey data disproportionately by higher-income, non-Hispanic, white individuals. This leaves other minority populations who use other products that are still on the shelves, available in flavors, out of our policy designed to protect public health. This is an equity issue and a failure of public health policy to support all of our teens equally. We are deciding to support some of our population and leave out a remaining group. Finally, the FDA regulation, as we heard, leaves out a bunch of products, so what you could do locally is to protect your youth, protect your population, and join over 50 cities in California, over 250 nationally that have been brave enough to pass good policy banning all flavored tobacco products, and 60 that also go as far as banning menthol cigarettes. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment for item C3 is still open. Any member of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome back, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't pull a speaker slip on this because quite frankly, I didn't want to stay that late, but since we're up, I'll stay for it. Little tangential with my comment, but springing off of what I heard the city attorney reference in answering questions about the lack of, or the elephant in the room, I'm known for my elephants, that the cannabis group of vaping and smoking seems to have been conspicuously removed from this ordinance. Two of our sitting council and mayor received substantial campaign contributions from the cannabis entities that ended up with licenses in the city. It would seem to me that those two parties should abstain from voting on this ordinance if it is not uniformly affect all retail smoking products, but that would be a city attorney's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Eilers, and I'm a resident of Moro Bay. I'm also a mother, and I come to you from that aspect of things. I have two young adult children, which one got really wrapped up in the vape products when he was in high school. It became a huge problem in our home. It led to smoking cigarettes. They didn't understand the risk, they didn't understand the health problems that came with it, and they ended up sharing it. It became a social thing, they would do it at basketball games with their basketball team, and it really became an epidemic. Now, as an adult, he doesn't smoke anymore, thank goodness, but he does tell me that when he was, when he was going through his problem, it was the local stores that would sell him the vape products. So I can only speak to his experience that it does happen, it's unfortunate, probably not all stores, but there are stores here that give to our students. So that is my argument. Please consider this ordinance.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for item C3. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Thank you and welcome.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Jim Knut, and I think I had sent you some information about a statement that I was included in your packet, but my point is, or my thought is, there is comment made that the dispensaries would be exempt from vaping products so they could sell vaping devices. Now, they could actually sell refillable vaping devices. So theoretically, somebody that was 18, which I mentioned in my thing, could go get a marijuana license from a doctor, and I went online and there's a ton, not a ton, but there's at least 10 in the tri-counties here. Couple online, so where an 18-year-old can just go online and get a medical marijuana card, walk into the dispensary, purchase whatever, but could purchase a refillable vaping device. So they could fill it with both THC, CBD, whatever that is, or tobacco juice, so they could use the same device for multiple purposes. Let's say an 18-year-old student or just graduated, he would still have contact with 17-year-old, 16-year-old. I highly think that, I mean, I applaud you to try to stop the vaping problem in Moro Bay. I think that flavored vaping should just be done away with. However, I don't think you can exempt the dispensaries because they're gonna have devices that can be used. So I just urge you to correctly put this ordinance together, well-designed and researched, make sure you're covering all the bases, and that's about it. I mean, you know, there's state, there's comments made that the state of California regulates vaping. Well, you know, the federal government regulates marijuana, it's illegal, but yet the state of California has made it legal. So there's not, there's a, you know, juggling going on. So I think if Moro Bay wants to take control of the situation, let's stop the flavored vaping, because I don't see people that, you know, that are 20 or 30 gonna want to smoke bubble gum or strawberry. They may want to smoke tobacco, but not, you know, that kind of flavors. So do your best. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for item C3. Any member of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Dan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Dan Sedley, I'm a Moro Bay resident. I have appreciated all the presentations from, from our city attorney, Chris Newmeyer, to all of the speakers that came and gave us information, especially a subject that was covered by our city attorney, I want to especially address, and that is protecting the lungs of people that don't smoke any device, and the recommendations by the American Lung Association that Mr. Newmeyer touched on again and again and again. I, if nothing else happens, if, I have feelings about the other subjects, but I really want to hit on this, that we should protect non-smokers' lungs, second-hand smokes, second-hand vaping, however that impacts other people's lungs. I think that has to be the biggest concern that I have, that people aren't forced to inhale other people's exhaust, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Public comment is still open for item C3. Any member of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Surveying the audience, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to us, council. We've been asked to consider a number of issues by our city attorney with regard to the, not only, I guess, numerous conversations we've had, but also a look at a first and second reading of an ordinance. I want to start with the ALA recommendations and ask for discussion on that. As you recall, with regard to the ordinance, we had previously received a D grade in order to move to an A grade, there were several recommendations that were crafted in the original ordinance that would move us to that A grade. It wasn't about getting an A grade, but it was all about, in essence, second-hand smoke. And so I'll start with that discussion and just, we're taking input, so. Who would like to lead off on that discussion?
Can I ask just a clarifying question?
Sure.
Are we, can we go through, or are we going through one by one?
Yes, I am. I'm going through the list that the city attorney outlined in his presentation.
So we're on Tobacco A, multi-unit residencies, and then we'll move to?
I'm on the ALA recommendations, page 112, one. Page 112 of the staff report, one. American Lung Association Recommended Regulations and...
All of them, or just, are you starting?
Well, that's what I was wondering, is it A, multi-unit residencies?
I think we might be here all night, so in your comments, if you could address each of them or give your general feelings about it, however you want to respond, I, this could be tedious, but an important, obviously, process. So I'm gonna categorize it as ALA Recommended Regulations. If you want to make comment about multi-unit residencies, tobacco retailer license, pharmacies, cigars, locations, flavors, that would be fine. Or if you want to make no comment, that would be fine also.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject.
Yes.
For purposes of going through the ALA recommendations, it's useful to note that the first two are the ones that the ALA absolutely recommends in order to secure an A grade, and I think the American Lung Association grading, the grade that it provides to cities and counties and states, it does carry some weight, given who they are. Issues C, D, E, and F, those are what they're calling emerging issues. So it's fair to say that they more strongly recommend A and B, although they recommend all of them.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification. Who would like to start us off? Okay. Okay, Councilmember Davis, thank you.
I personally wish that no one used tobacco, but tobacco is a legal product. My goal is to protect young people, and I think we can do that through a combination of enforcement and education. This is a very serious issue for me because a lot of emotional issues are involved because of our young people's use of tobacco and vaping products. But we have to remember that tobacco is a legal product, and we do have local businesses and employees who are engaged in selling tobacco, which is a legal product. I think that following the ALA Tobacco Retailer License Program recommendation is a major step toward reducing young people's access to tobacco. I don't know that we can completely stop young people from getting it, but we, the best we can do is put up barriers, and I think the Retailer License Program will help do that. The sting operations that our police department conducts, and I think a 100% ID requirement is a basic part of that program. So I would say yes to A and B. As to the others, pharmacies, cigars, locations, and flavors, as long as tobacco is legal, I hesitate to venture into the area of trying to ban the sale of a legal product. So I would be no on pharmacies, no on cigars, no on locations, and I would permit the sale of menthol-flavored tobacco products and flavored smokeless tobacco products. In the discussions that I have had with our tobacco business owners, with school officials, council member McPherson and I did meet with Vice Principal Cadwallader, and he said that their surveys have showed that the students do not use menthol-flavored cigarettes, nor smokeless tobacco. So I would favor continuing to allow sales of menthol cigarettes and flavored smokeless tobacco products.
Thank you. With no volunteers? Okay, Councilmember Heller, thank you. Start naming names.
Thank you, everybody who came out tonight. It's a really important issue, and I want to thank you all for participating in public comment. It's not an easy issue to resolve, but that's why you elected us, is to make these decisions, and I'm happy to be, to be part of it. For me, this is really about our kids. Tobacco is legal if you're 18-years-old, but what about all of our kids, or grandkids, or nieces and nephews who are younger than that, who apparently, based on what the assistant principal said from Moro Bay High School, don't even know what they're smoking? What about them? You know, when your kids are a toddler and they put something in their mouth they might swallow and choke on, you take it away from them. When they get to be 10 or 11-years-old and they want to ride their bike, you make them wear a helmet. In my opinion, we have a responsibility to protect our kids from these products completely. So my feeling about it is, I absolutely support the multi-unit residence, as written in this ordinance. I support the tobacco retailer licensing program. I support the pharmacy clause. I support the cigars, except some comments made by one of the, one of the speakers said that keeping it a five, five in a pack does not really accomplish what we need to do, so I'm not 100% sure about that. The locations, the retailer locations, I don't feel strongly that that's super important, to be frank. Flavors, I'm just gonna put it down there. It's flavors what gets kids into these products. It's the flavors. And I'm not convinced that flavored tobacco, chewing tobacco, is not used by kids because of the flavor. When I was young, I smoked a rum-soaked cigar, because a cigar by itself was horrible, and I thought somehow I could tolerate the rum-soaked version. It's all about the flavors. I support banning all flavored tobacco products. As an adult, when you go to the doctor, they don't just ask you, do you smoke? They ask you, have you ever smoked? Have you ever smoked? This is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember McPherson?
Well, I'll go next. When Councilmember Davis and I got together, the first thing we did was to say, what is the goal of our ordinance? And we had not done that previously. And we discussed it and talked about it, and we actually wrote out what, and agreed on what we thought the goal of the ordinance should be. To establish barriers that discourage young people from smoking and vaping without causing significant economic harm to Moro Bay and legal businesses, and to protect the public from second-hand smoke. So I'm using that as my criteria in the way I'm proceeding in going through these. So I would, I would support the American Lung Association recommendations. I believe the tobacco licensing program will help us to do better enforcement, so if in fact there are some local businesses that are selling, we'll catch them, and we'll penalize them, and we'll stop it. And as Councilmember Davis said, we did talk with the assistant principal and also the school resource officer, and according to what they told us, and they do do regular surveys with the kids... surveys with the kids, they said that they mostly get it from their parents, from older siblings, or online. So I would definitely support those two items. As to the?
I'm sorry, did you say you supported A also?
And B.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
A and B.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yep. Pharmacies, we only have two in town, and one chooses not to, but I see no reason to prohibit pharmacies. I think they can decide on their own if they want to or not. I would say no to cigars, and I'm not, according to the principal and the resource, school resource officer, they don't see kids smoking cigars. So it doesn't seem to be an issue with the kids. Locations, I'm okay with that. Flavors, this is why I wanted to make, ask my question earlier. Here, are we talking just about tobacco? Are we also talking about vaping products? And it's important to me because I would definitely want to prohibit the sale of all favored, flavored vaping products.
This is tobacco and smokeless tobacco only?
Well, that's why I want to make sure.
On this part of it, yeah.
This is just tobacco. Is that correct?
Insofar as the council can distinguish between flavored tobacco and flavored vaping, I would want direction on both of those products. Of course, if the council wants to just ban all flavored tobacco and all flavored vaping, then that's direction as well.
With regard to page 113, item F2, that refers to, as far as I know, flavored tobacco products, specifically tobacco products, not vape, and smokeless tobacco, correct? Like chew?
Correct.
Okay.
But isn't?
The remainder is addressed in the, in the remainder.
The flavored vaping comes back later.
Right. That's the next part.
So there will be an opportunity for us all to discuss that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's why I?
I'm trying to take this in order.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
For purposes of discussion, item one is, on item 1F is flavored tobacco, and then I was suggesting with the roadmap here that when we get to vaping products, you'll see that item B on vaping is flavored vaping products.
Okay. I would not ban the menthol, and I'm open to banning the other flavors if there are, if they're, if tobacco is sold in other flavors besides menthol. And I would not prohibit the smokeless, which according, again, according to the principal, was not an issue with the young people.
Okay. See, I think it's Councilmember Addis, thank you.
Well, I want to thank the public for coming out and for the extensive public comment over the past five meetings. I am concerned sometimes that we talk about our Morro Bay High School students as if they're not part of our community, as if it's just the high school's problem and not Morro Bay's responsibility. And so I do really want to keep our focus on the fact that the kids are part of our community, even if they may step onto a high school campus for part of their day. And I appreciate this idea of establishing barriers for young people and protecting the public. I am in support of A. I have a little bit of concern around A2, around renewed leases, requiring not all new and renewed leases would prohibit smoking. I would like to see that just be for new leases. I am fine with the extension. I think we said that we would maintain the lease extension, and I would be fine with that. I'm fine with the tobacco retail license program. I would like to prohibit the sale of tobacco products. Pharmacies, it doesn't make sense to me that, on the one hand, a business would be helping people get healthy, and on the other hand, selling a product that we know is going to inhibit their health. I would like to see the sale of single cigars prohibited, because I do think those are marketed toward teens, even if the high school says kids are not smoking cigars on campus. I appreciate that anecdotal data, but I think there's bigger data out there that shows us that it's an emerging problem that we can take a stand on now. I would like to see us put something in place in terms of retail location restrictions, not that I think we have an issue right now, but for the future, I would like those retailers to be away from our schools. On the flavored tobaccos, I am in support of that. I don't mind excluding menthol from that as a middle ground. I know that when I met with some of the tobacco retailers, they said menthol was some of their larger sales, so I could see allowing menthol as a middle ground. And I am fine prohibiting flavored, smokeless tobacco as well.
Thank you. And I'll be quick, and I won't elaborate on rationale, but I, I believe the ALA recommendations are primarily designed to limit our exposure as non-smokers to secondhand smoke, or even for smokers, to secondhand smoke. And also, perhaps curtail the use of menthol cigarettes, which are significant in the adult population. So for myself, I support A, B, C, D, E, F, with the exception of menthol, which we have discussed before and included in the ordinance as an exception, and also item 2, the smokeless tobacco. So I would not be in favor of F. So with that, for staff, this is just information to get back to staff. Here's the count I have. With regard to the ALA recommendations, I have support for A from 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 council I have support for B from 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 council members. I have support for C from 1, 2, 3 council members. I have support for E from, D, excuse me, D, I gotta get my alphabet correct, D, from 1, 2, 3 council members. I have support for item F from 1, 2, with the exception of menthol from that second council member, and then no support from the third. So that's how it stands with that. Is that clear enough for feedback on that?
Yes. With the few questions, Councilmember Addis had brought up a modification to A.
Oh, thank you.
On whether or not renewed leases would be included in the prohibition, or just new ones. If there's an appetite for discussion on that, then direction would be great.
Head nods, yes or no, and on that one? Yes, go ahead. Just clarification?
The problem I have with not including that is, if you have a long-term tenant, and they are playing by a different set of rules, and you've rented the apartment next to them and have to breathe their smoke, you know, I think that's an issue, and I don't, I think this is an important item for the, for this particular section that needs to be part of the ordinance.
Yeah, I'll just say for myself, I support it as well. That part of A, I was a whole supporter of A, and then the other two council members that supported it are, yes, and yes. Okay. So it looks like we have at least four that support that. Okay?
Okay, and then?
I'm sorry?
As for locations, right now, I guess we're gonna table whether there'd be any discussion down the road on that, but we're not gonna come back with location zoning restrictions? That's E?
Well, I think I gave you the number that supported it, and I guess that's, I had E, 1, 2, 3.
Oh, okay.
So that would be a planning commission consideration?
Yeah, that's gonna be a separate track. Certainly, an ordinance can be brought back for everything else, but zoning restrictions require more review and work than just bringing back an ordinance. And then on flavors, it sounds like, then, basically prohibiting sale of flavored, with the exceptions of menthol and smokeless tobacco, correct?
That was correct.
Okay. All right.
That's what I had. Okay.
Great.
Robust, very good. We did that well. We've got a few more to go here. Item 2, vaping and e-cigarettes, let me go back to my notes here from the presentation. With regard to the vaping products, there was discussion regarding the federal ban. You heard some information regarding certain flavored products that are now available to circumvent that, et cetera. So page 1, excuse me, page, page 113, vaping products and e-cigarettes. I'll open it up, and then also the cannabis issue, which, if I refresh my memory, Mr. City Manager and/or City Attorney, when we wrote the ordinance originally, or when the ordinance was wrote and considered, because there was a state program through the Department of Consumer Affairs that regulated cannabis, we exempted that or left it out of the ordinance. Is that correct, or I just want to be clear about that?
Yeah, that's correct. And just to expand on that a little bit, you know, depending on the type of cannabis that's consumed, they have a different testing regiment that is pretty significant, has actually evolved over the last year or two. So they test the potency.
A little more into the mic.
Oh, sorry. They test the potency of the product. They test residual pesticides, microbial impurities, foreign ingredients, moisture content. Let's see, what else? And then, yeah, I think those are the main, main testing considerations. That's for every single product that crosses a counter, or that's sold online through a delivery system. So unlike the vaping products, these, these, the traditional vaping products, these actually have a testing regiment, and that was the distinction that council made in the consideration of including cannabis, or excluding cannabis from that.
And we also discussed the security requirements in terms of getting into a licensed cannabis retailer?
Correct.
With regard to?
100% ID check. There's a waiting room with a security guard posted. They have to be checked in before they're even allowed to go into the facility to look at the product, or to talk to a quote-unquote "budtender." So that's not applicable to tobacco retailers at this time.
And refresh my memory, there was a comment made by one of our public members about the potential receipt of funds from cannabis retailers in decision-making. I'll ask the city attorney to weigh in, but I'll also ask Mr. City Manager Scott, if you would remind the public of the process that was used to make decisions on retailers, please.
Okay, I'll take that first. So the process for our city, unlike some others, is that it was administrative process, meaning that the city staff made the decision. City council created the ordinance and the process, but we implemented the process. It was open to all, all applicants. There was initial screening by outside consultant HDL, who's an expert in cannabis. They made recommendations or moved forward applications that passed initial screening to the fire chief, police chief, and finance director for review, and that group made recommendations to me, with two finalists who moved forward and through the permitting process.
Thank you. And any comments, Chris?
I just wanted to answer the question about campaign contributions. Campaign contributions and whether or not they create conflicts of interest are regulated by the Political Reform Act. The California Political Reform Act does not consider campaign contributions to be gift or income, which are subject to the conflict of interest rules. This is largely because it's considered a form of speech, protected by the First Amendment, to campaign contributions. So in short, campaign contributions do not create conflicts of interest for council member decisions.
Thank you. So with that, I'm gonna move to vaping.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When I met with four of our tobacco business retailers, they asked the council to require a 100% ID check for all tobacco products. Do we have support for that from the council tonight?
That's later. That's a later one, after vaping.
No, actually, he brought it up with regard to the retailer licensing program. Is that what you were relating it to? You were the only one that mentioned it, that's why I didn't, were you?
No, but that ID check is later.
It's on here.
It's on here, it's on here after vaping.
It's the last item, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, item 3, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah. You got ahead of me.
I'm supportive when we get there.
Well, when we get there, okay. We'll just, we'll get there. Can you just hold on? All right, vaping. I'm gonna start with page 114. Have you addressed A, B, C, and D, please? And general comments, and who'd like to start us off? All right, no one else will?
Oh, I, I will.
Okay. Councilmember McPherson?
I will. Well, I think I've been consistent in, in the way I look at this, and I keep wanting to focus on the goal that we stated earlier, and that's to put up barriers to young people getting a hold of these products. But I think it would be inappropriate for the city to ban the sale of all vaping products, because adults are consenting, and it's legal, and if they can't buy it here, they're gonna go buy it somewhere else. And we're going to lose the sales tax, and our local businesses are gonna be hurt. So that doesn't meet the second objective, or part of our objective, which is, we don't want to cause significant economic harm to the city or to our businesses. It's a legal product, adults can do it and buy it, and so what we really want to do is make sure that kids don't get a hold of it. And that's where the licensing program and the ID check come in, because that way, we can ensure that their, kids are not getting the product here in Morro Bay, as far as we know. And so that's why I would ban the sale of flavored vaping products, because we know that those?
So that's B? If I, so I just want to be clear, that's B on page 114?
Correct.
Supports B, okay?
With the exception of menthol, I think that should be excluded, as I understand it. The kids aren't smoking menthol. I would ban the use of one-time-use pods. Oh, wait a minute, yeah.
BB?
Think, wait.
For clarification purposes, BB is, would be more limited than just prohibiting flavored vaping products.
I, okay, I, I wanted to make, all right, thank you.
Because that's the federal prohibition.
Then I would not.
So I'm confused. You, you support B?
I support?
Except for BA?
The exceptions.
And BB?
Yes.
You do not support BA and BB? Okay.
Right. I do support, I do support C.
Okay, hold on, okay. You got it?
And I agree with our previous decisions about the effective date of prohibition.
Okay. Thank you. Any volunteers?
No volunteer.
Oh, sure. Councilmember Heller, thank you.
My message is pretty much the same. I think we have to really step up and protect the next generation of kids who are gonna be addicted to tobacco, and the lifelong health issues that are associated with that. Maybe there are other ways they can get the tobacco. Can they go next door and get it? Can they go around the corner? Can they get it online? That's fine. But when they're in our house, when they're in our front yard, we've gotta ban these products. Just like we would make our kid wear a helmet when they ride a bike, even though they might get away with it down the street, we have to do all we can to protect our young people from getting addicted to nicotine. This is the latest and greatest marketing move in the United States, after original tobacco, which we fought for years. This is the same thing, except far more potent, and our kids are the subject of the marketing. We've gotta put a stop to it.
So is that a support for A? On page 1?
I don't know the numbers, but I'm against all vaping products and all flavors.
Okay, so that would be A, okay.
Okay.
If I'm correct, and then vitamin E acetate, that would?
I'm leaving that up to you, Dr.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hennig, it's your specialty.
And the D, effective date of prohibition, would you support the previous recommendations?
Previous recommendations are fine, yeah.
Okay, thanks, all right. Just wanted to make sure, thank you. Who would be next? Looking to my left, my far left, my short left. Okay, Councilmember Davis.
Yes, I'm in agreement with Marlis on A, B, and AB, and banning of vitamin E acetate, and on the, the effective date of prohibition.
So you support, don't support A, you support B, excluding menthol, or excluding BA and BB? And you do support C?
I don't want vitamin E acetate.
So you support that, then, okay? Yeah, you know, you don't support that. All right, got it, I think I've got it. And what about D, the effective date of prohibition?
Yes, I'm fine with the 30 days.
Okay. Councilmember Addis, thank you.
Well, I think on the vaping thing, my goals are twofold. One is to protect kids, but the other is to protect plastics on our beaches. And so for that reason, I would be in support of A. And so, for that reason, I would be in support of A, banning all vaping products, supportive of B, banning flavored vaping products, which would include the one-time use, the menthol, menthol, the vitamin E as, well, and then I'm supportive of the rest of them, C and D.
Okay, I've got it, thank you. And for myself, I too agree with everything that Councilmember Heller said. Well-stated, I won't repeat it. I believe it's, however, an epidemic. I think the statistics are significantly, have been significantly vetted by our experts in the field, and the local statistics speak highly of a major health academic issue within our young people here locally in Morro Bay. I support A, B, C, and D. So, it appears like we have support for A, B, C, and D, with regard to vaping. And now, B was kind of an alternative question, wasn't it?
Yes. If my math's correct, it appears that we have three council members that would like to see an ordinance brought back, consistent with A. And then, that, of course, makes B irrelevant.
Right.
And then, C and D as well.
Correct.
And then, just to confirm, on the ALA recommendations, there were some also, also extensions of effective dates. I'd mentioned in the staff report, if I could just confirm, council wants to have the same extensions, where there's some time for the prohibition to kick in.
The implementation, I support that.
Okay.
I'm looking around.
That didn't seem to be a discussion issue before, per se.
Yes, I support that.
Yes.
Yeah, I just have one thought about that.
Sure.
It seems like we have different dates in here, and I'm wondering if we can't just have one date for everything, or is that possible?
I think that the interest being served by the different dates should be considered insofar as the tobacco retailer license program. Originally, it was suggested we wait about a year, so staff could pull together fee resolutions, different documents that would be needed, implementation, et cetera. As for the prohibition on secondhand smoke in multi-unit dwellings, the consensus before was to basically give a two-month extension, just so there's time for the landlords and residents to get ready for it.
Yeah.
As for the prohibition on vaping products, that one seemed to fluctuate a bit, but the final direction was to basically give it about five months, which effectively means half a year, because after an ordinance is gone through introduction, adoption, and 30-day effective period, that's at least half a year, if you add five months. So, that's the logic behind the three different sets of dates, but council, at its pleasure, can consolidate them all into one date if it wants.
Yeah, it's okay with me to leave it, and Don, yeah, Jeff, okay? All right. Everybody else? Okay. And so, for ID check, the last item, maybe just a ye or a nee? Do you support that, or not?
Yes.
Yes, 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 we all support it, that's five support. Thanks, members of the public weighing in on both sides of this. This has been a long process for us, but nonetheless, a very important process. Thank all of you for coming out this evening. I think we all appreciate the magnitude of concern for this issue, and, you know, the democratic process is about vetting differences of opinion on items, and this is one of the best debates, I think, we've had in a long time, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and I just want to add, I appreciate the fact that you allowed us to have this extensive discussion about it, because I think it was important to do so.
Absolutely. With that, it looks like, yes, Councilmember Davis, sure.
Yes, and, and while I disagreed with many parts of what we finally came up with in our discussion, I am not disappointed at the outcome.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could? Yes.
Just make sure the expectation isn't that we'll have the ordinance back at the next meeting. We'll bring one back in a few meetings, as quick as we can, but I don't think it'll be done in two weeks.
That's, that's fine. I think we have a pretty impactful agenda for the next two meetings anyway, so. With that, it looks like biofluid break time will take four minutes for biofluid break and be back with item C1. Thank you again. We are back. Thank you for that break. We're on Agenda Item C-1. This is presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2018-19 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Recommendation to Pay Off Calpers Liabilities for Tier Two, Tier Three Unfunded Liabilities. I will turn it over to Ms. Callaway, if she's ready, for the presentation. Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you, good evening. We have our auditor with us tonight, Mr. Kenneth Poon. He's the owner of our audit firm, the Poon Group, and his staff completed the audit and provided the reports that were attached to, to the staff report. There's copies on the back table for anybody in the audience that would like to review those. Mr. Poon will go through his presentation, and then we can circle back to the recommendation. We did close fiscal year 1819 with a surplus of over $700,000, and we are recommending that we use about $500,000 of that to pay off our tier two and tier three unfunded liabilities for our retirees in those two classifications. And this serves a couple purposes. One, it will reduce our, it'll eliminate the unfunded liability for now in those two groups, prevent those unfunded liabilities from growing substantially, as they are in the classic membership, and also save about $160,000 in interest savings. So, we can have that conversation. Also, before I turn it over, I do want to thank the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. They formed an ad hoc committee this year and reviewed several of the drafts and the final version of the CAFR that's before you. They have a memo with recommendations for the future CAFR that's attached to the staff report as attachment two. And in general, I think there's five recommendations. We, you know, agree with those recommendations that are in the staff report, and we'll implement those in the next CAFR to improve the document going forward. We really look at this as a partnership with our finance advisory committee and their review, and it only makes for a better document, gives us a different perspective on that. So, thank you for your work. And now, I'll turn it over to our auditor.
Welcome, Mr. Poon.
Thank you.
Welcome back, I should say.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Member of the City Council, again, thank you very much for having me here to, tonight, to present the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and our other results. So, what we, what we normally do is actually go through the scope of work, the audit responsibility, and then also we'll talk about the overview of the financial statement, and pull out some key financial indicator, pension information, and then last but not least is to go through our other results. So, the city actually did engage us to perform a couple things, which include the comprehensive annual financial report, which on our end is performing a financial statement audit on the city's basic financial statement for the fiscal year-end June 30, 2019. The city also engaged us to perform the audit, the compliance audit on the Transportation Development Act Fund, including the local transportation fund on roads, the transit enterprise fund, and then also the local transportation fund on non-transit, which is the bike, the bike path. As required by the auditing standard, I'm required to communicate with, to you about our audit responsibility, which already spelled out in our audit engagement letter, but I would like to pull a couple things and talk about it. As management yourself, you are fully responsible for the financial statement by presenting these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle in the United States of America. The city is a state-local government, so the governmental accounting standard board is the standard-setting bodies for state-local government, which actually, the city is complying with all the accounting principle from that particular entity. You also need to adopt sound accounting policies. Really important that you establish and maintain property internal control over financial reporting and compliance to make sure that your financial statements are fairly present in all material respect in accordance to generally accepted accounting principle. Last but not least, you need to have programs to prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibility as the auditor, we, we perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standard, and also, we do one step further, is to perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standard, which required us to take a closer look at your internal control over financial reporting and compliance, to make sure that there is nothing to be reported. Even if there is nothing to be reported, we still need to issue the internal control letters to you stating that we did not note anything regarding internal control. Communicate with those charged with governance, basically, we determined the, the city council to be the, those charged with governance, so I'm, like, tonight is the, the great, great time for you to ask me any questions that you may have regarding these financial statements. We also assess the audit risk of internal control over financial reporting and compliance, determine the fairness, of the fairness presentation of these financial statements, and render our other opinions on these financial statements. Overview of the financial statement. Basically, the city did go above and beyond the minimum requirements of the GASB requirements, the governmental accounting standard board requirements, actually prepare a comprehensive annual financial report. The comprehensive annual financial report basically divided into three different sections. The first section is introductory sections, basically have a letter of transmitter letter, the list of elected officials, the organization chart, but one thing that I missed it, congratulations to, to the city. The city did participate in the GFOA, the Certificate of Achievement in Excellent Financial Reporting Program, and for your last year, 2018, report, you did actually receive that award. Crucial to your team, the main focus for ourselves as the auditor is the financial sections, which include the independent auditor's report, is our, which spell out our audit opinion, the management discussion and analysis. So, management actually did perform an analysis on your financial statement, compare, like, listing out all the financial highlight for the current fiscal year, compare your current fiscal year to the prior fiscal year, like, instead of reading a 200-page report, you are able to read through those couple pages and understand what's going on during, for the current fiscal year, so that you can compare to the prior, the prior year results of operations. You also understand your capital asset and debt management, so everything is included in the MDNA, so, which is a really good reading material, and, like, it's a, it's a storytelling document, so instead of reading just the numbers. The basic financial statement basically include the government-wide financial statement, which in this document is a consolidated financial statement of the city as a whole. So, the government-wide financial statement, which basically break it down into two columns. One is the governmental activities, which actually consolidate all the governmental funds, general fund, special revenue funds, the debt service fund, and the capital projects funds, and then also the business-type activities only on the enterprise fund. The fund financial statement is actually break it down by fund, so, which actually the city council adopt the budget based on those fund level. So, also, the notes to the basic financial statement, the notes actually did tell you a lot of detail about the accounting policy, the detail about the cash and investment, capital asset, pension note disclosure, and all the, the, like, the commitment disclosure are all in the notes to the basic financial statement. The required supplementary information is required by under GASB Statement Number 34, which adopted about like 18 years ago. And this statement is actually required certain schedule, for example, the budgetary information, how you adopt the budget. You also need to disclose the general fund budget and actual information, how you compare your actual to your, to the adopted budget. And then also, in accordance with GASB Statement Number 68 and 75, which is the new pension standard and OPEP standard, GASB also required us to disclose the 10-year's information on the change in the net pension liabilities, the contribution information, and the change in OPEP, the net OPEP liabilities, and the contribution information included in the state, in the required supplementary information. As you are aware, GASB Statement Number 68 was adopted back in 2015, and GASB Statement Number 75 was adopted back in 2018, so you don't have a full 10-year schedule. So, the schedule, the 10-year's information is still in the process of building thing, building up. And you do have the supplementary information for all the fund stays determined to be non-major and disclosed in there. Just because the city, like, go above and beyond, one of the areas that I really like is the statistical sections, basically talking about the whole year, like, giving you a trend analysis, including the financial trend, that, the revenue capacity, the debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and some operating information. It's kind of for you to understand the trend of what has happened in the last 10 years. So, the next statement, what we are talking about is the statement of net position as of June 30, 2019. In another word, this is the balance sheet of, as, for the city as a whole. The city ended with the total net position of $154 million, of which $144 million is net investment in capital asset. The GASB actually did coughed it out into a separate line item in the net position, because those assets are not non-liquid, like, it's a non-liquid asset, so you are not really be able to sell those assets and use it for operations. Restricted is about like $4.9 million, resulting in unrestricted net position of $4.7 million. As you can tell, the governmental activities, I have a $7.7 million in deficit, however, the business-type activities is, have a unrestricted net position of $12.4 million. So, that's netted again, so you do still have a surplus of unrestricted of $4.7 million. The income statement of the, the city, total expenses, $27.4 million. Net of program revenues, the program revenue, which include the charge of service that you can charge the user for a fee, or you can actually apply a grant to pay for it. So, for the fiscal year-end June 30, 2019, total program revenue is about like $21.2 million. As a result, the net cost of service is about $6.2 million. The general revenue, which includes all the tax revenue and investment earnings, $11.6 million. At the end of the day, you do have a surplus of $5.4 million, increasing your net position from prior year. The general fund is the main operating fund of the city. So, at June 30, 2019, you do have, ended with a pretty nice total fund balance position of $8.7 million. $3.9 million are actually what we call non-spendable, because about like $3 million is land held for resale that the general fund's holding, and then the rest of them are notes receivable and prepaid items for about like nine, added up to about like $900,000. You do have a committed event of about like $110,000, resulting in an assigned fund balance of four point, close to $4.7 million for the general fund. The income statement of the general fund, so the revenue is about like $13.5 million. The total expenditure for the general fund is about $13.1 million, resulting a surplus of $426,000, resulting, there's another transfer in, coming from other funds, because the general fund is paying for some of the costs for the other fund. So, the net transfer is about like $301,000, so resulting the increase in, in fund balance for the general fund, $727,000 for the fiscal year-end June 30, 2019. for the fiscal year end June 30, 2019. Couple key indicator, the net cost of service of the governmental activities is about like $12.8 million, however, the tax revenue is only $10.7 million. That doesn't include the investment earnings and also the transfer in from the enterprise fund to pay back the some of the operating costs for the governmental activities, so that's why you can see the ratio is about like 119%, okay? But this number is not too concerning, given the fact that there's about like $1.5 million transferring from your enterprise fund. Also looking at your rainy days fund reserve, we always use the unassigned fund balance compared to the total annual expenditure of the year, $4.6 million of unassigned fund balance, so the general fund annual expenditure is about like 13.1%? $13.1 million, giving you a ratio of about like 35%. GFOA has a best practice, basically requiring a two-month of expenditure as a reserve, which is equivalent to 16.67%, so basically you have double than the minimum requirement benchmark, so which is really, really good, too. Couple of the things regarding the pension standard, as you know, pension is only an estimate on your financial statement, so it's heavily, heavily relying on the expected long-term rate of return from those investment, and the discount rate, which is used by Calpers, 7.15%, so at the end of the day, the city record $24.2 million as your liability on your face of financial statement. GASB also require us to report a sensitivity analysis, just in case something happened to your investment, let's say it dropped by 1%, what will be the impact? The liability goes up to $37 million. However, if the investment goes better, go into 8.15%, your liability can drop it down to close to $13 million. Also in your OPEP liability, the current discount rate being used is about like 3.5%, which is a AA bond rating discount rate, so as of June 30, 2019, the liability is recorded as $2.7 million. So if the discount rate drop by 1%, your liability can goes up to $3.2 million, but if the other way around, if the discount rate goes up to 1% by 1%, your liability can drop it down to $2.4 million. Audit results, we are happy to issue an unmodified opinions for all opinions unit that we are giving out, which state that the financial statement are fairly present in all material respect, the accounting policy have been consistently applied, the estimate are reasonable, and the disclosure are properly reflected in these financial statement. Audit results, we do not have any disagreement with management, we did not identify any internal control issues that seems to be significant deficiency or material weaknesses, there are no accounting issues, and we did not identify any inappropriate activities happening at the city. So that concludes my presentation for tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Poon. We'll move to questions, I'll go ahead and start us off, I have a number of perhaps questions for Ms. Callaway and/or yourself. First, the audit results appear to be spectacular compared to maybe four or five years ago when you were here, when we had numerous management recommendations, would you agree that this is significantly positive?
This is significantly improved in your operations. We understand that the city run it at a very, like, in your finance department is really, really lean operations, and you do have some oversight, we see that there's significantly improved in your internal control by putting in some mitigation control, reviewing the transactions, we are happy to see that there's significantly improved in your operations, and as of this year, we did not have any internal control issue identified.
Fantastic. I'm on page 75 of the CAFER, and perhaps if you have that handy, I want to call out an issue that is very sensitive to me, and no pun, because of the sensitivity analysis that you do. The current discount rate for Calpers is 7.15%, as we know, most, well, let me say, a lot of our colleagues believe that that is overstated significantly, and indeed with your sensitivity now analysis, if it were a percent less, at 6.15%, we could be looking at an increased liability of about $14 million. My question to you is, based upon your routine evaluation and your understanding of Calpers and what they're doing, how realistic is the assumption 7.15% for a city to assume now?
Well, the actuary also have their actuarial standard, so instead of like dropping it down to another percent, it's be more conservative, and one of the things that they are looking at the expected long-term rate of return is actually looking at the last 30 years, and basically, when they actually look at the last 30 years, they really did hit the 7% like 7% rate of return, but also they stay tuned and reevaluate their investment portfolio, they certainly be more conservative, and may eventually will drop the discount rate again, but as of this point, I believe the 7% of 7.15% is conservative enough to report in your financial statement. Even the last couple of years is not realistic, because right now we are also expecting another recession, so that's why stay tuned, so I will have another meeting with Calpers in the next couple of months, and at that time, I will have more information coming from them.
Yeah, well, and I guess from an accounting standpoint, if Calpers says their discount rate is 7.15%, that's what we have to book, is that correct?
Yes.
Right, okay. Page number 79, the OPEP liability, I know, I think you use 3.5% discount rate because of AA bond rating, much different than Calpers' assumption of 7.15%, how realistic is the 3.5%?
Well, it's pretty realistic, because first thing first, the city did not set aside money in the irrevocable trust to pay off your OPEP liability, under the GASB requirements, you are required to use a AA rating bonds to as your discount rate, so 3.5 is pretty realistic, yeah.
Okay, great. The change in net position, and I love these statistical comparisons for 10 years, they're very helpful to look at trends in the city, but it appears to me in terms of looking at total government, if I'm seeing it correctly, the city's finances have improved tremendously looking at its net position over that period of time.
Correct.
Is that a correct observation?
Yes.
Okay, so we're moving in the right direction.
Moving in the right directions.
Page 148, question for you there. I noted the 10-year healthcare expense note, and looking back to 2009 and 10, about $830,000, pretty consistent, until we hit 2016, 2017 fiscal year, and then boom, 2017, 18, 20, 18, 19, the healthcare expenses have gone up dramatically, or is this consistent across many of the organizations, cities that you're looking at now?
Correct.
With regard to healthcare costs, because that's a significant jump in the last three years for us.
Well, keep that in mind, the healthcare, like, we are using a very different accounting standard, because in the past, it's all pay-as-you-go. For the last two years, we are using full accrual basis of accounting, that's mean you need to start capturing those costs into your op, like, in your numbers, so that's why the last two years, I'm not surprised, because it's inconsistent between the two accounting standard.
Okay, thank you. Page 150, looking at the water fund, I note, going back to 2009 and 10, significant losses over a period of, well, 9, 10, 11, 10, 11, 11, 12, 12, 13, 13, 14, 14, 15, and then I believe we had a 218 process in 15, 16, rates were increased, and then we have a more favorable outlook. Is that common in cities to have those kinds of losses in water funds over that many years? And is there not a debt service ratio requirement that needed to be met, or can you just comment on that?
Well, basically, you need to meet the debt service ratio, but it depends on the city policy, and some of the city, like, I can tell in my mind, there are two cities, they did not raise any revenue, because they do have a really generous general revenue money to subsidize the rate payer, but in your city, compared to majority of my city, you should actually include the rate, like, in your rate should also include the depreciation, because that is like you need to really capture and build up your reserve for your capital improvement.
Okay.
So that's why it's not like, yes, you see a surplus right now, but eventually you are using those money to fix, like, to do your repair maintenance, and then also at the same time to keep up your infrastructure for your water funds.
So is it fair to say that there's a lot of capital improvement that didn't happen that perhaps now needs to be caught up?
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you. Page 156, 157, I'm just looking at property tax revenues for 2015, 16 through 2018, 19, and note that we're fairly stagnant with regard to property tax growth, which is one of the major revenue funds for the city.
Correct.
And then TOT tax for the last four years is fairly, I'll use the word stagnant or steady, we're not increasing dramatically, sales tax pretty much the same. Does that give you concern about the need to diversify the revenue source for the city, or what would your comment be on that?
Well, I don't think as a city government, you can diversify your revenue, but also at the same time, you need to constantly look looking for new revenue. Property tax, franchise tax, TOT, sales tax, those are pretty consistent, and when we are looking at, especially sales tax, is basically majority of the city either see flat or dropping because of the way of people conducting business nowadays, a lot of things moving towards the internet instead of going to a local store. It doesn't happen a lot in Morro Bay, because you have a lot of tourists coming in here, so that's why I think the sales tax you can maintain, like, still having an increase compared to the prior year, and also it's a pretty nice increase from almost like a 10% for last year. I think it's a pretty, pretty good sign that you're still seeing the economic state pretty strong in this local economy.
Good, thank you for that. Page 160, talking about abilities to gain or garner new revenues, we have a shuttered plant, Vistra now owns that plant, I'm looking at taxable assessed value, and number one on the list is Dynegy, of course, with a taxable rate of 2.19% on a value of $56 million that provides about $100K for the city each year. If that asset were significantly improved, for instance, if a $200 million project occurred there, and that improvement then translated into a higher assessed value, would that be at the same rate, like 2.19%? Or perhaps would that be at a higher rate, and would that significantly increase the position?
That would certainly increase your position in collecting those, the property tax from them.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and then, let's see, 163, my last question, I already talked about that, never mind, I'll leave that for you, and thank you, and open it up to other questions. To my right, Congress, Councilmember McPherson?
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is a question for Jennifer. How would you explain this sort of large amount of money that we have at the end of the year when it wasn't really projected, so if you could just give us your explanation of, it's wonderful, I'm pleased to see it, but how did that happen?
Sure, there were several, a couple of different reasons why we had the surplus that we had. One of them is we, if you remember, two years ago, we paid off the side fund for our fire classification that yielded interest savings over the last two years. We intentionally did not forecast or budget for those savings, because we wanted to be able to repay the general fund emergency reserve, which fronted the money, so that's $170-ish thousand there. We had some vacancies and turnovers in a number of our departments, including our police department, when we have those vacancies, there's salary savings associated with that. We obviously don't expect or hope that that happens and continues in future years, so we don't, we don't have a forecasted vacancy rate, for example, in our budgets. That was the other leading example. A small, a small piece of that would be the lump sum payments that we make on our purse payments in July versus installment payments throughout the 12 years, or 12 months of the fiscal year, that yields in the general fund about $40-ish thousand in savings, so when you add those all up, in addition to some operational savings here and there, you're over $700,000.
So you're suggesting that a lot of it is really due to the fact that we have made some changes to actually conserve expenses?
I think some of the decisions the council has made and recommendations that you've made have helped save significant interest savings over the long term.
Okay, okay, thank you. And the other question I had for you, I think you answered, you said that you did agree with the recommendations that were made by CFAC, is that correct?
That's correct, there was five in total, and we agree with all of them, and we'll incorporate those into the 1920 CAFER.
And then, one of the questions that they had concerned the distinction between the unassigned fund reserves, and that was actually a combination of a number of different funds that we have created. Could you explain why that decision was made, maybe that was the auditor's decision, but maybe you can explain the distinction so that the public understands, because it does include more than the general fund reserve, emergency reserve, it includes several other funds.
Well, there are certain things that the city can do, actually, in accordance with GASB statement number 55, the fund balance classification and how you do reserve, you can certainly set up emergency fund as a committed fund balance, so that you don't show everything into the unassigned paragraph, but as the auditor, when we look at liquidity and look at things, we basically will evaluate both the committed fund balance, if you do have those emergency reserve, and plus the assigned fund, unassigned fund balance, and determine the rainy days fund, because I need to consider both of them.
So it simply means that we, even though we've set aside money for capital improvements, for example, and vehicle replacement, we could use that money if we needed to in an emergency, so in a sense, it's unassigned.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, sir, no questions. Councilmember Addis, no questions. With that, I will open a public comment on item C1. Thank you, Mr. Poon, appreciate that presentation. Many members of the public wishing to come forward on item C1, please do so now, I do have one slip, I will start with Terry Simons.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff. All due respect to the auditor, and my apologies in advance, I had misread his name, and I was so glad that somebody pronounced it for me, I was all set with a whole series of accounting puns, and so now, now that I know it's Poon, I won't bother with those. I was hoping that this would be a more fun event, anyway. I want to start by complimenting Jennifer Callaway, our finance director, I've been watching her for the last couple of years, I, when she first came on board, I had a very good feeling about her, just because of her general demeanor and her ability to jump into this, and her willingness to take it on. jump into this, and her willingness to take it on. The last couple of years have reinforced my belief that she's brought a whole new level of accounting and accountability to our community. I have not had a chance to go through the rather voluminous comprehensive, voluminous and comprehensive, I guess they're one and the same, financial report, and, but I will be doing that, and I'll probably have comments in the future. The CPAC report, I did have a chance to read through, and I was very, very impressed with the work of our own volunteer people looking at the books, looking at the way in which we're doing business. Their positive comments about Jennifer's work, I think, are self-contained, and I think that they did a very extensive review of it. And that's very comforting as a citizen, to know that it's not an outside accounting firm that's basically a hired gun, but it's basically members of our own community that are taking a hard look at that, and I would really, really encourage this council to continue to support and enhance as much public oversight of the various things that need to be looked at as possible. I think the CFAC is an amazing group, and they've just, they've really showed the way to how we can work with the public and the staff to build confidence in the community in the way that you're handling the city. I totally understand staff's recommendation to extend the deficit of the emergency fund by paying off the long-term debt, retirement debts, to the tune of $460,000 or something like that. I am concerned, as we move through the next couple of years, and I think we're all holding our breath through the coming national election, that a significant downturn may make this look like a mistake. But I'm confident that Jennifer's looked at this, and I'm confident that you're all looking at it, and I'm hoping for the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is open for item C1. Any member of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome, Betty.
I'm Betty Winholz, and just some brief comments. I too appreciate, and she had said that she was going to do this a couple of years ago, and has continued to do it, about being able to handle the purse things by using, paying off unfunded monies owed in advance, and that obviously has shown up as a good thing this year. But I feel that caution, that part of that was due to not having filled positions, so I don't see that happening in the next year or two, so that benefit won't be there. Of the recommendations by the Citizens Committee, I particularly appreciate the two in regards to explaining the fluctuations about personnel payments, how much in salary, and then transfers between accounts. And the recommendation is that those be explained, and I am unclear about whether that's for the next cycle, or if you're going to end up explaining them for this cycle, because they're unexplained for this cycle. Also, in trying to read this report, the attachments were not available online. And in particular, I wanted to look at those that had to do with the bike audit and the street audit, but the report just ended. And I don't know if they were just too big of a file, or if a link could have been posted where we could have then gone and seen where those files were, but they were not available online, just so you know. And then finally, with all the financial activity going on with the WRF, as you have hired a part-time person temporarily to handle PRA requests, I'm wondering if you don't also need to do that with finances, because of how lean the finance department is, if you don't need someone to handle those. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open on item C-1. Anybody wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys hear me?
No. Is your mic on, Dan?
I don't know how to turn it on and off.
Do a test, 1, 2, 3.
1, 2, 3?
There you go, you just need to be closer.
Okay, thank you.
Or be shorter. Sorry.
I'm not a financial or auditing expert. Oh, sorry. My name is Dan Sedley, I live in Morro Bay. I have, I have a question. It has, it's no reflection on Mr. Poon, but I am aware that best practices in regard to auditors are to change auditors every five years. I'm wondering how long Mr. Poon has been our auditor, and if we are within the realm and scope of best practices for auditing for our city finances. So that's as simple as I can put it. My question is, how long has he been our auditor, and if we should then be considering a different auditor, just from the perspective of best practices, not from anything that we perceive he might have done wrong. That, I don't mean to imply that at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Public comment's still open on item C1. Any members of the public wish to come forward on that? Any remaining? If not, I'll close public comment and bring it back. Just a couple of questions. Jennifer, maybe, do you have a comment on, Ms. Poon, you can?
I'll start while Ken's coming up to the thing.
Auditor's time.
Yeah, the city entered into the contract with the Poon Group for fiscal year June 30th, 2015. That was the first year. The contract was to extend through fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, and there was an option for renew for two additional fiscal years. So what that means is fiscal year 1920, since we exercised that option, is the last year we're in contract with the Poon Group, we'll be going out for RFP for the following 2020, 21 fiscal year, at which point, the Poon Group's welcome to submit a proposal, as are other auditors, and we'll evaluate those and select a new audit firm.
And also, I would like to add one more thing. The, actually, the state controllers, looking at the rotation of auditors as one of the important factor, and effective, like, this year, January 1st of 2020, they require audit partner rotation every six years. So instead of, like, and also, our firm has, currently have about like six other partners that can be rotated, so eventually, I'll be, after the six years, eventually, if the city decides to continue with our service, I'll be rotating out, and then other partners will come in and perform the service. And also, as the quality control requirement by our firm, every five years, we are rotating the team completely. So that will ensure our clients will be happy and have a new set of eyes, new perspective coming in to look at your financials.
Thank you, Mr. Poon.
You're welcome.
And then Ms. Winholz's question about the attachments not being available online, does anybody know if they were or weren't?
Yeah, so I just, I did just pull them up, the transit report, the bike report, and the roads report. They're, all three of those are significantly smaller reports, from 30 to, I think, 16, or 22 pages is the smallest. They're not as extensive as the CAFR. But I'm happy to email those as well, if they're not showing up for some reason. I'm seeing them on my computer now. So that could be why they just stopped, because they are smaller reports. Also, the question about explaining the variances, I interpreted the recommendations from CFAC to be for the 1920 CAFR going forward. I hadn't intended on going back. They're valid recommendations, and we attempt to do that, and obviously, in the, you know, 200-page document missed a few, but we will do that for sure in the 1920 CAFR, and make sure we catch all those variances.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'll bring it back to council and open it up for discussion. I will move approval of the CAFR, as well as adopting resolution number 12-20 approving allocation of $486,504 in fiscal year 18, 19, year-end revenues and over expenditures to pay off Tier 2 and Tier 3 PEPRA, unfunded accrued liabilities for the police, fire, and miscellaneous calculations.
Second.
So, motion by Mayor Heding for the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember McPherson, and I'll open it up to discussion.
I just want to thank our finance department and the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee for the excellent work that they have done. And I have seen such tremendous improvement over the last, just since I've been involved, and I was involved in the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee before getting on council, and I'm just amazed at how much they've done and accomplished, and I just applaud them and thank them totally. And I really appreciate the statistical section of this report, so thank you.
And I would like to point out that city received two major recognitions for excellence, one from the Government Finance Officers Association for distinguished budget presentation, and one from the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers for operating budget excellence. And I think that's a tremendous achievement, and thank you very much, especially with our very lean staff, as Mr. Poon pointed out.
I would just add, I'm sitting on CFAC, wondering at the time if things would get better, because they, you know, kept coming back. And so I want to thank you, Jen, and the CFAC, and also the subcommittee that went through, John Martin and Lois Johnson that went through and presented their recommendations in a very understandable format. So thank you so much for that, and I support the motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Heller.
I had my two cents. When I came to my first council meeting, I don't know, four or five years ago, the thing that just hit me in the face was, I was very concerned about how the finances were being managed here in the city. And thanks to Jennifer Callaway and Mr. Poon and the GFAC, I have no, no concerns whatsoever, and I want to thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Well-stated, and I agree with all the comments that were made. Been on council for five years, and five years ago, was extremely concerned about not only the finances of the city, but the lack of standard operating procedures and the significant recommendations from audits that occurred. Ms. Callaway, you, under your leadership, bless you, have done a tremendous job in transforming not only the department, but the very transparent reporting of the city's finances in a way that is unparalleled, in my opinion, in any large organization that I've worked in. Mr. Collins, I appreciate your oversight of Ms. Callaway, and I want to ask that you extend to your staff, because you are very thinly-staffed, the council's extreme thanks for all of the work that they do to make this happen, because we know it's not just one person, there's a whole number of folks behind that that really make this happen. I'm proud of our CFAC Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. Barbara, thank you for your leadership. Often, I attend, and thank you, Councilmember McPherson, for your over, your liaisonship of that committee. The review is impeccable. A couple of comments were made publicly about that. The subcommittee of John Martin and Lois Johnson did a tremendous amount of work and review in detail, made some great recommendations, and I'm very proud of that group, and feel very comfortable, as Councilmember Heller said, with not only the audit report and the lack of findings, the awards that we've won, but also the transparency and oversight that occurs with CFAC. So thank you so much for that, and with that, I will ask for the roll call vote.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. That brings us to item number C-2, adoption of resolutions of necessity. Resolution number 13-20 and resolution number 14-20, authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire easements in real property for the water reclamation facility project. That's APN number 066-331-046, Vistra Energy, and 066-331-036, PG&E, City Manager, City Attorney, to make the presentation. And then we will first hear from either representatives of Vistra Energy or PG&E after council questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, the staff report before you tonight is concerning whether or not resolutions of necessity should or shouldn't be passed in order to start the process for condemnation, or what's also known as eminent domain, for easements that are necessary for the water reclamation facility project. And the procedure presented is that conduct a hearing on the proposed resolutions of necessity. I want to be clear that this is not statutorily considered a public hearing. Rather, when I say hearing, state law simply requires that the property owners have a right to be heard due to Morro Bay's, I think you call it enhanced transparency and public comment provisions. We already have a public comment period anyways for each agenda item, so the property owners simply will be allowed to speak before public comment on this item. The fiscal impact, cost of the acquisition is within the overall budget for the Wharf project specifically. If you look at the exhibits, you can see that the city has offered $200,000 to Vistra to purchase easements from Vistra, and $113,000 from PG&E. So that's a total cost of $313,000. Background on this, as part of the Wharf project, as we know, there's multiple items of infrastructure that are necessary to construct the Wharf project. This item tonight is about the infrastructure that's necessary to construct underground injection wells and a new forest main pipeline. Portions of land necessary for those two items are going to involve temporary construction easements and permanent construction, and permanent easements for pipeline well and access located on these two private properties owned by Vistra Energy and Pacific Gas and Electric. In the staff report, you can see on page 69, Vistra Energy, it's listed there, there are three permanent easements the city is seeking from Vistra, and two temporary easements. If you turn to the next page, 70, there's one permanent easement we're seeking from PG&E. Pursuant to state law requirements for purchase of the property, written offers were presented to both of these private companies, and those were sent out on or about December 2nd, 2019. PG&E's response to the city was that, since they're in bankruptcy, and also, the Public Utilities Commission would be required to approve any transfer of land, that they're agreeable to the transfer, but it would actually be less time if a judge were to order the transfer. As for Vistra, negotiations have been occurring since December 2nd, 2019, on whether or not they're willing to sell us the easements. At this point, the city actually has given notice to both Vistra and PG&E that there would be this hearing tonight. That was provided according to statute, and both property owners know that they have an opportunity to be heard tonight, and they actually are tonight allowed to speak on the different burdens the city has for what we are calling the resolutions of necessity, which is the first step in the condemnation process. It also needs to be pointed out that two-thirds vote is required from the city council to pass these resolutions of necessity. So that's the background. In terms of discussion, state law requires that if a city is going to acquire property by eminent domain or condemnation, that first resolutions of necessity, basically that this land is needed by the city, need to be passed by council. So council is asked to consider basically three different issues. You can see this on page 71. Pursuant to Code of Civil Procedure 1240.030, staff report says government code, it's actually Code of Civil Procedure. There's three burdens that the city needs to meet and discuss and consider. A, the public interest and necessity require the project, basically the necessity of the overall Wharf project. B, the project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, essentially the planning and location of the easements that we're seeking. And then C, the property sought to be acquired is necessary for the project, basically the necessity of these easements themselves. So council is asked to consider those three items, and to discuss and determine whether or not those three are provided for. I want to go at length now into the three reasons, just to make sure that council understands the three issues before them for discussion. One, if you look on page 71, staff report references, and these findings are also presented in the resolutions, that the public interest, convenience, and necessity require the Wharf project, which consists of upgrading the city's wastewater treatment and water supply infrastructure, including construction of a new Wharf, new pipelines and pump stations, conveyance of wastewater to the new Wharf, and treated recycled water to new wells for groundwater injection replenishment and potable reuse, and decommissioning of the existing wastewater treatment plant. As a matter of background and why this project is being presented as something that's needed, the existing wastewater treatment- the existing wastewater treatment plant was built in 1954, and it provides wastewater treatment services to the city and some of the surrounding community. And that was built before modern state and federal water quality treatment standards and does not presently meet federal Clean Water Act standards for full secondary treatment. The WRF is actually, excuse me, the wastewater treatment plant has been operating under a waiver from the Clean Water Act since 1984. In 2018, the city received a time schedule order from the Central Coast Regional Water Control Board requiring full compliance with the Clean Water Act secondary treatment requirements by February 2023. Failure to comply with this order can result in substantial fines and penalties, and in addition to still needing to eventually bring the wastewater treatment plant into full compliance. As a result, the WRF project is necessary to replace the wastewater treatment plant, bring the city into compliance with all state and federal water quality standards, provide for water reclamation, increased water supply security for the city and surrounding community, especially in light of climate change and water scarcity. These are the findings being offered for council discussion to meet the first burden under state law, public interest and necessity requiring the project. The second is that whether or not the project is planned or located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. In regards to that finding, staff proposes that the WRF project is planned in the manner which will be the most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. It'll be located away from coastal hazard threats at a more inland and higher elevation to decrease chances of significant adverse impacts on coastal resources. The proposed location further minimizes adverse impacts on public views, public access, and recreation by being built on vacant agricultural land further away from the coastline and outside the immediate vicinity of existing commercial and residential uses. Other potential locations are technically infeasible, provided poor hydraulics and constructability, or increased adverse environmental impacts. Furthermore, it must be noted that the location of several of the easements is on property already dedicated for public use as a bike path. Relocating the easements would adversely affect more private property not already dedicated to a public use, could adversely affect sensitive cultural resource areas, and could significantly increase construction costs and risks. Those findings are being presented to meet the second burden, project is planned or located in manner most compatible with greatest public good and least private injury. And then third, whether or not the property sought to be required is necessary for the project. Acquisitions of these easements is necessary for the WRF project. Without the easements, water and effluence would not be able to be transported to and from the new water reclamation facility, the pump stations or wells, and there would be no injection wells to provide replenishment for groundwater within the area. In other words, without these easements, the WRF project cannot be constructed. The actual portions of the proposed easements, as I mentioned, are on existing bike paths, which certainly is much more agreeable to the public, especially since those bike paths should be usable after the construction's done, they're underground. As for environmental impacts, this was considered quite a while ago, when we had a final environmental impact report, back from June of 2018, and was certified. So in conclusion, after the city receives any testimony or evidence from the property owners who have been notified of this hearing tonight, and also considers all the other items that go into these three findings, I would ask that the city council make a determination as to whether or not to acquire the easements by eminent domain and adopt the proposed resolutions of necessity. The city must make those three findings that I went into at great detail for the benefit of both the council and the public, based upon all the evidence and the existence of the conditions stated. If these actions are approved by the city council, then the city attorney's office will be authorized with city manager's concurrence to file a court action to seek these easements through a judicial order. And I want to be crystal clear that right now, one of the property owners is engaged in active good faith negotiations with the city, and filing these court actions by no means means that we can't continue to negotiate. It's typical in condemnation proceedings for a city, or a county, or the state, to make sure that they can meet timelines that they're on by filing these necessary court actions, and then typically reaching a settlement before there's any significant court action. So it's a recommendation of the city attorney's office to consider approving these resolutions of necessity to make sure the city stays on schedule with its overall WRF project. Available for any questions, and we have here, of course, tonight, Public Works Director, the WRF Program Manager, and City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate that. I'll open it up to any council questions for Chris at this time. Seeing none, seeing none. I have no questions either. With that, I'll open up public comment. First invite up, if there's a representative from PG&E. I know you've been waiting a long time.
I'm with Vistra.
I know you are. I see nobody from PG&E, so then I'll ask any representatives from Vistra if you'd like to come forward, sir, thank you. And please, with regard to this, five minutes instead of three would be appropriate, so we'll give you five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Heading and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Garrett Llewellyn, and I'm appearing on behalf of my client, Vistra Energy, to address the city's proposed adoption of a resolution of necessity to begin eminent domain proceedings to acquire certain easements over my client's property. As a company that's fully aware of the long history of the land and assets it owns in the area, Vistra Energy strongly supports the city's ongoing efforts to maintain and improve public works projects that benefit the citizens of Moro Bay. Vistra has a legacy of compliance in properly maintaining its many sites and real estate assets across the nation, and its intentions and record are no different here in Moro Bay. Vistra has taken pride in not only maintaining the property it recently acquired, but also cooperating with tenants and neighboring landowners in finding the best use of the property in its current state. Looking to the future, Vistra is excited about moving forward in development efforts on the property that would bring long-term benefits to the site and the community. That commitment to be a good neighbor now and in the future certainly extends to the easements matter before us, and that means achieving the way that best benefits all parties and the property in the long term. Finding that compromise that's a win for all, however, often takes time. As you may know, Vistra was just notified of this hearing less than 15 days ago, and only became aware of the city's offer in late December. Regardless, Vistra maintains committed to diligently negotiating with the city and with respect to the easements at issue, but it is also mindful that strong and durable public-private partnerships come from negotiations that take the time needed to build trust, understanding, and cooperation. In hope of strengthening that partnership, Vistra respectfully asks that the council continue this hearing 30 days, both to provide Vistra the statutorily required notice and opportunity to adequately respond, but perhaps most importantly, to allow Vistra and the city to continue their ongoing collaborative discussions with the goal of an agreement. Eminent domain action is time-consuming and costly for all and unnecessary. Vistra believes that the best path forward here is for all parties to work together to bring Moro Bay's residents clean, affordable energy, and safe water, and not to spend taxpayer dollars needlessly on an eminent domain action. We look forward to working with you as a partner in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn. Appreciate you being here this evening and waiting so long to come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. A public comment regarding item C-2 is open. Any member of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Oh, I have a slip, I'm sorry. Terry Simons. Terry, welcome back.
Long time.
Yeah, I know, I'll tell you.
I think you probably thought I was here for those other items, but I was actually here for this one. Like the previous speaker, I too am very concerned about the necessity of eminent domain. It's going to be expensive. I have some history working on projects where eminent domain was invoked or resisted. I think the attorneys are going to make more than Vistra and PG&E combined as they negotiate through this, and I would really encourage the council. I understand that PG&E is kind of in a hard spot. They can roll over easily by just simply stipulating to the judgment of the court when you get an easement or a condemnation request on their property. Vistra seems to be willing to comply, and I think that, from what I heard from their representative tonight, they need a little bit of time to basically hammer out some details. I would encourage you to do that. To that extent, I think that there are, I have some concerns, if I were going to be representing someone on the other side of this, about the claims or the propositions that have been made and the arguments for this. Clearly, the WRF is such an over far-reaching thing that there's no reason to even discuss that. While I would like to, but I won't. The acquisition of the easements are necessary, possibly. Are they the best route? Probably not. I am particular concerned, can I get a...
AGP, are you available? Folks in the back, we need help. Overhead.
Until that slide can come up. Let me just say that the, the community is already reeling from the thought that Main Street and Quintana are going to be significantly disrupted and all the merchants and businesses along there, but there are some other less important, less revenue-based, but equally important businesses that are going to be disrupted by this sewer line relocation, force main relocation. And I'm speaking particularly of the wildlife rescue funds and organizations and all of their buildings and facilities that are going to be significantly disrupted by the excavation of a new force main through the middle of their operations. I think that an alternate route exists, and...
I've superimposed some drawings on top of here. The existing force main comes across from the lift station and comes over and connects to the sewer line here. I'm told that that is a standby and isn't even actually used, and because it goes under some significant PG&E infrastructure here, not the plant, but the connections. Oh, what? Did you come by the microphone?
Oh, sure.
Terry, your time's up, but I'm going to give...
I wondered if he had a remote mic, but he's got it.
Terry, your time's up, but I'm going to give you another minute, because we were fumbling with the overhead, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a small point, but I think that the organizations that are located right in here...
Could you try to speak into the mic for the people that are watching? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll do that. All right, sorry. Right in here, this location, is where the Pacific Wildlife Foundation and some of the animal rescue organizations are. Their operations will be significantly disrupted by the construction anticipated through there. The existing eight-inch main goes through here, and it's not even used. I would submit that there is a route right up here along an existing road through undisturbed... There's a water tank up here, and there's a perfectly good service road that goes up and over. It's actually a shorter route to the lift station. I can only assume it wasn't considered because nobody thought about it. And I don't think you're so far down the road that where the cost difference would be insignificant to move it to an open area.
You have 10 seconds, Terry, I'm sorry.
I'll give you all these drawings, and Rob knows what I'm talking about. This area right here, there's no, you could come right up this road and over the top and down and be done.
Thank you, Terry.
It'd probably even be cheaper.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Public comment is still open for item C-2. Anybody wishing to come forward, please do so now. Betty, welcome.
Betty Winholz, perhaps the city attorney answered my question, that this is not going to have the public's testimony recorded as part of the record, that it's really only about the people who have, be impacted by the eminent domain, and maybe he could affirm that for me, that I have interpreted his interpretation correctly. I also have a question about PG&E and whether, who you're talking about to them. Are you talking to the receiver that's been appointed to PG&E, or are you talking to headquarters, the PUC? Who is it that's making the decisions or being, who is considering the PG&E input here? I think it's interesting that when you talk about whether or not the city is meeting the requirements for eminent domain, that whenever we wanted to apply for our waiver with the water board, somehow we had really high standards, and even though we weren't quite secondary, we were always quite there. And now that we want to build a new sewer plant, all of a sudden, our sewer plant isn't that good, and we don't really have that good of a standard, which I don't believe at all. So I think that we tend to use our data and our information depending on what it is we want, and so therefore, I disagree that we need the new sewer plant, that we don't meet that requirement, because we don't need a tertiary plant at this point. It's become too costly. We can get by with a secondary, and we all know that that's possible, and addressing the second qualification for eminent domain, that it's not planned in a good place because of the disruption that Mr. Simons mentioned earlier to the Quintana businesses, at least temporarily, and certainly to the estuary on a permanent basis. So, I don't think you meet those criteria. I do want to point out and express my disappointment in the map that was included in the staff report, that it was incomplete, there was not a good legend with it, I mentioned this to you in my email, that it was not clear, and I think that needs to be corrected. Also, the fiscal impact, and this is not the first time that this statement has been used with regard to the WRF, that when it comes to the physical impact part of the staff report, well, it's included in the overall cost of the project. But that still doesn't tell us how much each of these pieces is costing, and I think that I would prefer, and I think the public could better understand how much money you're spending on which pieces, if you would give us the numbers, not just say it's been included. And then also, my comments regarding the signing and the stamping and the descriptions being inconsistent, I'd like to hear those addressed as well. And I think that concludes my comment.
Thank you. Public comment is open for item, excuse me, what item? C-2. Welcome, Dan, are you coming up? Pardon me? Are you coming up? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Dan Sedley, Moro Bay resident. I have some questions about the proposal. My first question is, should the word infusion well be interpreted as singular or plural? I couldn't tell from the reports if there was more than one planned or just one infusion My second question is, they essentially give four acres for the well. Again, I don't know if it's one or two, but it seemed like almost four acres was a bit much just for a well. So that's my second question, is are we attributing four acres for just one well? My third question has to do with the map, number nine map, of where the well easement is. Due to all the markings on it, I was having trouble telling for sure where this easement well exactly was going to be, and if somebody could show it in a more clear fashion, I would muchly appreciate that. So those are my three questions. I do not believe that this eminent domain meets any of the three criterias that Mr. Newmeyer has given to it. I don't believe that the public requires a WRF project. I believe that secondary treatment can meet the regional water board standards, so therefore we do not require a WRF. We didn't always plan a WRF, we planned a treatment facility which morphed into a WRF. So do we require it? My answer is no. Whether the project is planned in a manner with public interest, again, I say no. My neighbors are moving. The people are being priced out of their homes, and I don't see concern for that from the city council. Maybe they don't care, I don't know, but I see my immediate neighbors moving from six increases in their sewer and water bills in a period of just five years. People's water and sewer bills have tripled. Number three, is the property necessary for the project? I don't think so. I think we need to be building somewhere else anyways. This project is delayed indefinitely. This project is delayed indefinitely. We were supposed to have started this project this past summer and you still can't tell me when it's going to be built. Nobody can tell me. When are we going to deal with the red-legged frogs? When is the Army Corps of Engineers going to have agreed? When are the grading permits going to have been done? And all the necessary components, they're not lined up yet. And yet, we're always told, well, in two weeks or next month or we're going to have it done, but it's not. Meanwhile.
Thank you, Dan.
Kajukas is sailing forward.
Thank you, Dan.
No problems.
Thank you. Public comment for item C two is still open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
Mayor, Council, my name is Pauline Stansbury, Morro Bay resident. I am wondering if the city has the cart before the horse again. The permit from the Coastal Commission says that all other government agencies and parties involved will give permission over their particular jurisdiction before the city receives its permit. The permit's special condition two E states the owners of any properties on which construction activities are to take place, including to be crossed and accessing the site. Consent to each of their properties. How is it that you have a permit from the C C C when you don't have permission from Vistra or P G and E as evidenced by that meeting? What evidence do you give to the C C C staff to convince them you have permission? Not only do you not have permission, you are using eminent domain to acquire the easement. Perhaps special condition two E only applies to the sewer plant site and not the pipeline, except for the page on the permit signed by Ms. Craig for Ainsworth includes the pipeline. As a ratepayer who has seen my bill rise significantly, I do not believe this plant is necessary. Yes, a sewer plant that works is necessary, but not an expensive tertiary plant that hurts our business community in order to put it in and then risk the life of the estuary for 30 years of operation. This project is not planned or located in the manner that it would be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private inner injury. I believe you do not meet the requirements of eminent domain. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for item C dash two. Mimi, I just got your slip, sorry. Mimi Goldberg. Welcome back.
Hi, it's been a long night. Mimi Goldberg and so you guys, the eminent domain, I think it's really cool that he's willing to work with you guys, for one thing, because I know that judges, they say if two people don't get along, they go, just go out in the hallway and discuss it, you know, instead of using the time of the court. And so I learned a little bit in class today, so it's kind of cool. I learned about nitrogen and nitrogen removal and, okay, how to get rid of nitrogen from service waters? $200, $200 plus for a pound of nitrogen to be removed. Enhanced nitrogen removal, other ways, cover crops, grass buffers, restore wastelands. Dollars and pounds compared to $200, just dollars, like compared to that. So Akata Bay, Humboldt Bay, they take primary treatment, it's a primary treatment plant. It gets rid of solids after primary treatment. The rest of the water, they send it right there to the swamps and it's really cool. It doesn't smell, it helps everything, it really helps the environment. And also, the Central Coast Biological Society is having a get-together at Oak and Otter Brewing Company on February 18th and they're going to be discussing elephant seals and otter pups if they're more susceptible to oil spills than adults. And I also would like to say that we have two great state parks in Morro Bay. One is Moro Strand State Beach and Campground and the other is Morro Bay State Park. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Mimi. You're Jim. Public comment is still open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome, Linda.
Linda Donnelly, Morro Bay. Mayor Heding is constantly saying that the project has been properly vetted. If that is so, then why is the city forced to take this eminent domain action? Special condition two E of the coastal development permit required property owner consent prior to issuance of the permit. How is that the coastal development permit was issued back in November last year without the consent of these landowners? Does the Coastal Commission know that, what you are doing tonight? According to criterion nine, readiness to proceed of the WIFIA handbook, program handbook, the EPA will assess the following, quote, "whether there are any other issues that may affect the development and financing of the project, such as community support, pending legislation, permitting, or litigation." Does the EPA know what you are doing tonight? Why is this item not a public hearing item? The action to be taken is quasi-judicial and you are requesting the parties appear before you and public funds are being expended. When did the city appraise the land and determine the purchase price? Where is that appraisal? On page 71 of the agenda staff report, it says the W R F is necessary to replace the W W T P. The proposed water reclamation facility is not absolutely necessary, nor is it the only solution to satisfy the discharge order imposed by the regional board. It is just an option chosen by a few elected officials to placate their wishes and the public was never asked if they wanted them to do this. The electorate were never given a chance to vote on this option. The public was only asked if they wanted to pay for it or not, and many voted not to. So only five people in town voted in favor of it. The attachment on page 73 of the agenda staff report is from the 30% design concept report of May 2019. To start construction on May 21st, 2020, as the schedule indicates, the final construction contract documents should be out to invite bids by March with an opening bid in April in order to start on time. Where are those bid documents? It takes about one month alone just for the bidding process and then it needs to be awarded by the city council no later than the end of April. Why is this page being included in this agenda staff report since the apparent outdated schedule is unrealistic? And I quote this when I come up here, two weeks now in a row, this is your coastal development permit shells, you know, shall do, this is what you've got to have in place, and I don't see it being followed. I mean, we've, several people tonight have quoted on item two E. So you might want to read this, is all I'm saying here.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for item C dash two. Welcome.
Hi, Melanie Williams Mahan. Regarding the eminent domain, why does the city need so much for this project? For instance, the proposed easement for the forced main coming from the lift station on the Embarcadero and through the Marine Mammal Center is 100 feet wide for a single pipe. Why? The trench will only be three feet wide. The proposed easement for the pipes running down on the bike path is 70 feet in width, which goes way beyond the existing security fence line. Why do you need such a large swath? The existing bike path corridor is as narrow as 20 feet in width in a couple of places, so why are they only, why are they going on to the power plant property for another 50 feet? And will you be relocating the security fence further to the west? The conveyance pipeline plans don't show anything going there. It would be helpful to show where the pipes will be situated within these easements on the exhibits. The area you want to put the injection wells is quite large, but there are not any plans for where the wells will go and how many wells there may be. Before the land is taken, this should be known and the owner of the land should be told this. These easements will be purchased with public funds. Why are you purchasing more land than you need to? You should be looking out for the public who will be footing this bill, convincing us that you're doing right by us. Thanks.
Thank you. Public comment is still open. Item C dash two. Saying none, I will close. Public comment, a couple of questions for staff. The expense associated with eminent domain, perhaps not stated yet because we haven't entered into this, this is just an N O P, but I'll just let you respond to that, Chris.
So if the city were to actually go to court and needed to seek essentially judicial order, then of course that will cost attorney fees. The reality is, is that the city made offers to purchase on December 2nd. Those offers were sent to the property owner's record as they provided to the county of San Luis Obispo. We sent them according to law to who they listed at the county. We've been negotiating, or at least we've been trying to negotiate for over two months now. And at this point, hopefully, we won't have to go to court, but I believe that if the city's going to stay on track with its record, that the time schedule that it has, then it's in the city's best interest to make sure it has at least the option of going to court. As for the legal costs, the court action itself would depend upon whether or not it's going to be extended, whether we have to go to trial, whether or not, you know, we can get a stipulation. So it's indeterminate, the amount, but of course, the legal fees, you know, there will be legal fees involved.
And who did we speak to at P G and E? One of the questions?
So as to who we spoke into at P G and E, again, we sent offers to purchase over 60 days ago to the owners of record, you know, that are listed with the county. And who we've been talking to, we believe are the representatives that speak on behalf of P G and E. I mean, obviously, it's a huge corporation, but.
But it was P G and E directly, not P U C or anybody else?
No, it's P G and E. I mean, they're the property owner.
Why is this not a public hearing?
So the statute for eminent domain provides that simply there needs to be a hearing provided to the property owners. It does not say public hearing. There's a big difference between a hearing and a public hearing. Public hearing has statutory requirements for noticing and the procedure and everything. Morro Bay, as I'd mentioned in the staff report, provides for essentially public comment before every agenda item, so, and that's optional. Morro Bay doesn't have to do that. Because Morro Bay does that, essentially, the property owners were allowed an opportunity to speak at the public comment before the agenda item.
How many infused wells, once again? One or two?
Eric Casares, the Wharf Program Manager. Excuse me. The feasibility study that was completed in 2017 and the modeling work that's been done since then identifies between three and four injection wells is what will be needed to meet the capacity of 850 acre-feet per year.
Why are we purchasing four acres? Isn't that too much?
Good question, and that goes to one of, what one of the speakers mentioned is we're still in the middle of the hydrogeologic evaluations and we're trying to determine the exact locations. We also have pipelines running in between those wells. The actual wells themselves are very small and don't take up much land area, but there's still a bit of unknown exactly where those are going to have to go to meet the D D W's requirements, Division of Drinking Water's requirements. So that's how the area was put together.
Is C C C aware with regard to our C D P? And are we violating our C D P with this process?
No, we worked with Coastal Commission very closely, specifically because of the nature of this project. It is one project, but it has very, three very distinct parts. So understanding the schedule around the water reclamation facility component itself, the Coastal Commission issued a coastal development permit and is giving us phased construction, giving us the ability to construct the different phases at different times. So when we move forward and get all of the clearances that we need to get from Fish and Wildlife, the Coastal Commission, excuse me, will allow us to start construction on the water reclamation facility component only. Not until we meet all of the requirements for the other permitting agencies will we be allowed to start construction for the conveyance facilities and then the, and then the injection wells themselves.
And also, is the EPA aware with regard to our WIFIA funding of this process?
I'm not exactly sure how detailed the EPA knows about the property negotiations, but they do know that we're in the middle of acquiring some property in order to build the conveyance facilities and the injection wells.
And let's see, why do we need so much? I think you answered that. Ms. Mahan, I'm sorry, you went fast. I was trying to take notes. Maybe if you could submit that email, we'll get those questions answered. I was trying to write as much down as I could. Where will the pipes be situated specifically? I know we've been over that before, but maybe you could answer. I looked at, that was one of her questions.
So that's one of the, that's one of the questions that was asked, and I believe one of Mrs. Winholz's comments was made towards us as well. The pipelines are currently shown in the alignment within the bike path, so they're not currently shown utilizing that full 70-foot width easement. There's a couple of reasons why we need an easement in the bike path from both Vistra and P G and E. One, because the existing easement that we have for the bike path is very specific for the bike path and the water line, and we have a different use, so we need to change the use of the easement. That's one reason. The other reason is if we can get a larger easement, we can work within the confines of the existing easement, but the use isn't right, so we need to get, we need to get the new use. So if we're getting the new use, made the decision to look for a little bit larger easement so that we can modify the alignment of the pipelines slightly and make construction more cost-effective and easier. And then also, by widening that easement, it allows us to also rebuild the bike path and fix a lot of the issues that currently exist with the bike path, with mud on the bike path and those kinds of things.
Mayor, point of order, 9:30 is approaching.
Thank you. Thank you for those answers, by the way. I'll entertain a motion if so desired to move past 9:30.
I move past 9:30 to time uncertain.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson, second by Councilmember Heller, I mean Heller, looking the wrong way. Davis to continue. Any discussion? Not, roll call vote.
Councilmember McPherson? Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. So I will bring it back and open it up for discussion. I'll start. Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn, for, I don't know if you made the trip out or if you're local, but thank you for waiting and being here. I was particularly taken by your statement that these kinds of negotiations require trust and they do take time. And my sense is that Vistra really wants to be a partner with the city and not enter into this process, and we fully understand that. We're on a very tight schedule with regard to our W R F project, and if the negotiations should fail, which I'm hoping they will not, that would necessitate the process of eminent domain. And if we didn't start that now, we would indeed not meet, because of the requirements of eminent domain, meet the adjusted time schedule for the project. And so we remain very much committed, I'll just state personally, to the negotiations with Vistra to get this done outside of eminent domain. I think for myself, I wish to not go into that process to avoid costs and a lengthy court process that could be expensive for both parties. And so again, I just wanted to express that. I do not support your request for continuation, and specifically, my comments are related to our project timeline. We've looked very closely with advice from our legal counsel and our project manager, and this is absolutely the latest date that we could have waited to start this process without impeding it and the schedule and incurring significant costs for delay. We're under significant pressure from the state Water Board and a number of other agencies, funding agencies that will save us literally tens of millions of dollars that require us to move forward. In my long. In my long tenure with this project, I find that, A, the public interest and necessity require the project; B, the project is planned or located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury; and C, the property sought to be acquired is necessary for the project. I base those comments based upon the information that has been presented in the staff report. Also, as a member of the WRF Subcommittee with Councilmember McPherson, I've significantly vetted this with our project manager and legal staff, as well as our city manager, and am using that as the rationale to proceed forward with this process. I therefore recommend that we adopt the Resolution of Necessity, Resolution Number 13-20 and Resolution Number 14-20, authorizing the commencement of eminent domain actions to acquire temporary construction easements and permanent pipeline, well, and access easements on real property with APN 06-S-331-046, Vistra Energy, and APN 066-331-036, PG&E, for purposes of the water reclamation facility project.
Second.
So motion by Mayor Heading for the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember McPherson, and any other discussion?
I just want to agree with everything that the mayor has said. This is a necessary step that we have to take. It does not mean that we are going to court to pursue eminent domain, and I am hopeful that our negotiations with Vistra will continue and to a very fruitful outcome, but this is something we have to do to stay on track on the project, so.
Hi.
Yeah, Councilmember Heller.
I, I found the comments by, the public comments to be very compelling. I don't see that this fits the requirements of the law at all. I'm not an attorney, but it absolutely makes no, no sense to me. I can't possibly support it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Llewellyn for coming tonight, and from what I have heard about our negotiations, we are making some headway, and I believe that the city's goals and Vistra Energy's goals are very much in line, and I am confident that we can reach agreement before we go to court, so I will support the motion.
I would concur with that and just add, I do think that it meets the requirements because the project will provide clean, safe water for drinking and for use in fires. It'll provide a safer situation for our critical infrastructure. It will improve our effluent, and it's going to be better than what we have now in terms of serving our community. So for those reasons, I support it, and I hope that negotiations do continue in good faith with Vistra.
Thank you all for your comments. With that, I'll call, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Heller?
No.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item C-4, review options for improvements to public trash and recycling receptacles and public restroom management in the Embarcadero and Moro Rock parking lot areas. I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Scott Collins, city manager, and I do have Rob Leivich, public works director, who can fill in some of the blanks if I miss something and answer some of the questions that may come. So what we're talking about is review of options to make improvements in the public trash and recycling receptacles and public restroom management specific to the Embarcadero and Moro Bay Rock, Moro Rock parking lot areas. So we recommend that you review the options that are outlined in this report and provide direction as appropriate. The fiscal impact, we're anticipating approximately $20,000 impact to the city's general fund, which will be spread across this fiscal year and next. If those options are approved by city council, we'd bring back that through a budget adjustment through the fiscal year 2019, 20 mid-year budget review, which would be the next council meeting. And in addition to that, the city is seriously considering a, you know, major improvement to the Coleman Beach bathroom. The current facility is not a sustainable building. In fact, it's a hazard, and it's been chain-linked off, and we will no longer be able to use it. So we, we need a replacement project, and Proposition 68 has State Park grant funding available to all cities in the amount of $200,000. It's non-competitive, it's really just there for the taking, and we've submitted applications. We have a project team of pretty much every city department involved, and we believe, we stand ready to receive that funding sometime this calendar year. We are at the pass of the State Parks process. There is a matching requirement of 20%, which equates to $40,000. That can be through in-kind and/or other city funds. We do have Park &amp; Lou funds, which are not general fund dollars, that could meet that match. We don't have a really defined or fully defined project yet, but we anticipate it won't exceed $300,000. If it goes up to that amount, we would just, you know, take from the Park &amp; Lou Fund, which has sufficient revenues to cover that. So as councils well aware, we've seen a pretty significant increase in tourism growth for our community. Looking back past 10 years, we've seen almost a doubling of the TOT receipts compared to 2008, 2009. A lot of things can, can help explain that. There's just been a proliferation of tourism generally across America. The city has ramped up its efforts with the Tourism Business Improvement District, so a lot of better marketing to, you know, traditional markets, but outside of those as well. And that growth translates into many positive things for our community, primarily the local tourism industry, but spill over effects into other things like restaurants and retail. And it's also been a boon to the city's revenues. TOT is something the state can't claw back, at least at this time, so any, any dollars raised is, it's to the local government to support local services that our tourists enjoy and use. So moving on, the, the other side, the flip side of that coin is that there are impacts from, from increasing visitors to our community. And this is really particularly true in our tourist-serving areas of the Embarcadero and the Moro Bay Rock area. In that combined area, we do have a significant number of public trash and recycling bins and restrooms to help serve our community and our visitors. However, during the peak tourist season, we do experience negative impacts to those, particularly on, on when it's really nice weather. You can't always predict when that's going to occur. You can predict the holidays and expect that you'll see a ramping up of the number of visitors. So the physical manifestation of that impact is that at times, we do have overflowing trashcans, particularly in the really heavy trafficked areas, and intermittent service disruptions to our restrooms. So TBID will continue its good work in trying to encourage more tourist visits. So with that in mind, we certainly need to make sure we're managing properly on our side that, that anticipated growth, so that there's a, there's a balance within our community and our local ecosystem, and that people want to come back and visit if, if they have a good experience. So that, to that end, over the past several summers, the Public Works Department, through support from city council, have instituted schedule modifications and completed projects to help address this, this concern. Those include adding staff hours with the consolidated maintenance team, ADA accessible porta-potties at the Moro Rock last summer, increase the number of restroom cleanings from two to three per day to four for the Embarcadero and Moro Rock restrooms. We removed small trashcans that were sort of scattered on the Moro Rock parking lot and consolidated that into larger trash containers, which is ironically had the, you know, noticeable impact, you know, according to staff of reducing the amount of litter. Sometimes you think more trashcans means better things, but not always, and maybe encourages the behavior we're, we're trying to discourage. We've posted signs in the public restrooms that have contact information should there be an emergency or a critical issue, so that our maintenance crews can respond accordingly. Where possible, we have Harbor Patrol and consolidated maintenance staff who can check for overflowing trashcans. However, that is not a typical duty, and that is only when there isn't something going on, which is usually not. So that's, that's just something we can utilize at times. We replumbed the Moro Rock restroom to account for greater flush loads, so we haven't had any issues with that since that time, and coated the floors with epoxy in our public restrooms to help improve drainage and reduce odors and stains. So with all that in mind, we still have heard complaints and concerns with, with respect to trashcans and restrooms. So with that, we brought forward a couple of suggestions for city council to consider. And by way of background, the trashcans and recycling bins, with few exceptions, are serviced by Moro Bay Garbage, and they provide six-day-a-week service in the peak season for those trashcans, Monday through Saturday. They do Saturday morning pickup because they don't want to be in the middle of the Embarcadero at the heaviest trafficked time. That's really inefficient and problematic from a greenhouse gas perspective, so they try to do it when there's less people around, which means they're servicing them at the morning, and there's buildup over the day of Saturday and of Sunday even more so, and that creates issues in terms of trash buildup. Let's see, what else? Yeah, and as I mentioned, the, the staff that are available in sort of that area are already consumed with, just keeping the restrooms going, and Harbor Patrol are very busy, so we don't necessarily have available staff to, to, we can readily and consistently rely upon to service the trash bins and recycling bins. So we did actually inquire with Moro Bay Garbage last year in middle of summer to see if we could add a Sunday pickup, but there's insufficient number of, shall I say, commercial service accounts in our town that could make that work for them. So we'd be paying exorbitant amount to have one trash driver just for Moro Bay alone, and just didn't seem feasible from their end or ours. Another option could be to hire temporary maintenance worker who would literally be there to service the trashcans, just kind of roaming, you know, on the weekends, and to make it somewhat palatable, you know, add enough hours so that somebody would actually would be interested in the job, you know, Friday through Sunday. I think somewhere around 20 hours a week is what we were projecting. And we estimate that would cost the city about $6,000 in total for the work between late May through early October, which is our, our peak season. There's no budget for such expense at this time, so as I mentioned, this, if this was something interesting for council, we would need to bring a budget amendment for the remainder of this fiscal year, which would really cover the end of May and first, and then all of June. It's unclear if we could fill this position, so, and if it will work, if it's necessary, all those things. I think with that in mind, if this was supportive, we would treat it as a pilot for the summer and see how it goes. With regard to the restrooms, as noted, the city consolidated maintenance team manages six public restrooms. We do have a number of water front lease sites that have public restrooms. Those are managed by, by those businesses there, not by the city. The main cleanliness issues we typically experience are in the Rock, Moro Rock restroom. And lots of times, we get service calls for clogged toilets. I won't go into details. However, we often find that when our staff get there, if they push, push the flusher, the problem goes away. So it appears there may be reluctance to use the wall-mounted flusher button, and understandable for some folks. So we think maybe perhaps a auto flushers, kind of a system would address that issue. If, so if we, we kind of redid all of the restroom, that restroom on the male and female side, I think that would run us in the neighborhood of about $8,000 to $10,000. We think that would address that issue because the plumbing is not the issue. Our plumbing has been fully replumbed, and it's amazing what people do think should be flushed down the toilet. But again, not going into details. So we also think it's important to continue to provide the ADA porta-potty even with those planned improvements at the Moro Rock, and then as well with Coleman Beach, given the timing that we anticipate with the State Parks process, we won't have a new restroom in place this summer, so we think it'd be wise to have an ADA porta restroom by Coleman Beach, because that is a pretty popular beach, particularly during low tide in the summer. So that, all that would equate to about $20,000. And as I mentioned, the replacement of the Coleman Beach would be a separate capital project, which we can probably discuss more as we head into the, the fiscal year 2021 budget cycle. So I think that covers, covers all of the, the suggestions. Of course, we're open to other suggestions from council and the public, but we, we believe these will help address some of those more acute issues that we experienced in the last few summers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up for council questions. Councilmember McPherson?
Okay. Well, I did submit questions in advance, but I am happy to say that in your presentation, you answered all of them except for one. So I'm going to ask that one. Since there is no trash pickup by the garbage company on Sundays, what are you going to do with the trash if you have somebody pick it up?
So we would take it to the city's corpr yard, and we have roll-off containers there that we service, for example, the Parks trashcans with, and we would use those roll-offs that we have for recyclables and waste there and empty them into those. Not atypical for Sunday service in other cities where they use temporary staffing for, to help out during those peak Sundays.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none? Okay, I'll open public comment for item C4. Any members of the public wishing to come forward? Please do so now. I have one speaker slip, Mimi Goldberg. Mimi, welcome back.
I'm Mimi, and I'm so stoked, you guys. It's a really great night at Moro Bay City Council meeting, to me. This has been one of my, you know, one of my children that I've been working for, for a long time. The other night, on the full moon, I went and picked up trash, because it's a full moon, and Zach Efrin, he was there the other day, and he filmed a commercial about Earth Day. Yeah. And then I'm going to make sure that I pick up all the trash before our surf contests, so the people come, and it's real nice. And I just think it's great, and I want to say thanks, Scott, so much. And Coleman Beach, that bathroom too, yeah, that was a concern, like, the kids are swinging, you know, we're going to teach our kids how to go to the bathroom in the bush right there. So I think that's a great thing, that you're going to improve that and not just tear it down. And I, I agree 100% with everything Scott said. All right, thanks, you guys. Good night.
Thank you, Mimi. Public comment still open for item C4. Anybody wishing to come forward? Please do so now. Welcome, Linda.
So I didn't read the agenda item, but I will make some comments on it. I would agree that, or I would at least urge you to consider a Saturday pickup in times when we have events in the city. I mean, we, I thought you were actually going to say something different than you said, which, we do have a lot of events down on the Embarcadero. And I've been down there many times when those trashcans are overflowing, and the seagulls are involved with everything, and then we have litter, and it's scattered everywhere. I also wanted to say, though, this is off-topic from the Rock and the Embarcadero. I was out at Dog Beach the other day about sunset, coming back after sunset. I don't know why, I naively thought that we had a golf, city-owned golf cart up there because there was a, there was a golf cart there, and it was too dark. And I thought that they were refilling the dog, you know, mid-muds, and I thought that they were taking the trash away, when in fact, it was actually someone's personal golf cart putting their own trash in our trashcans. I never saw the person, I mean, it was too dark, but I, I talked to a different citizen, I talked to someone who said that at the point, Dog Park Parking Lot, that there used to be a, a roll-off, is that what you call them? dog parking lot, that there used to be a roll-off, is that what you call them? A big dumpster. And that's not there now. It's just a small one that, you know, you would think if somebody weren't stuffing their personal, why they have to put their personal trash in there? It was two great big garbage cans, garbage bags full, and why they weren't putting it at the corner of their own, you know, out on the street for the garbage to pick up. But maybe you think about, if that's a problem over there, if there have been reports, bringing a roll-off back there. I was actually quite surprised when I was like, oh, oh, that's not the city, you know? Yeah, why would they be out there at sundown, whatever? So anyway, but I really would encourage trash pickup on real heavy weekends that we know an event is coming, because it just looks bad on our town to see that trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is open for Item C-4. Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back. This is a review options and provide feedback with no action. So looking for direction. Anybody would like to start us off?
Sure.
Sure. Councilmember Davis?
I feel as if the city does have a responsibility to the public, whom we invite to come here for recreation, to provide them public facilities. And I want to publicly thank Linda Merrill for her steadfast efforts, weekend after weekend during the summer, working at the restrooms, at the Rock, and at Coleman Beach, and keeping the council fully apprised of the situation on a regular basis. And she called maintenance to come and help, and she picked up trash, and she helped clean up the restrooms. And I really thank her for that. And I think that we have a responsibility. I appreciate Scott bringing these options to us. And I think $20,000 to make this major effort to keep our public areas clean is money well-spent. And so I support the options that Scott has brought to us. And I also support the plan for rebuilding the Coleman Beach bathroom using the Park &amp; Lou funds for our match. So thank you for doing this, Scott.
Thank you. Other discussion or input, I should say?
I concur with all of that. And a special thank you to Linda, who's probably watching right now, for all of her efforts on this, and to city staff for bringing this forward. I think it's timely. I'd like it to be ready for next summer, hopefully. And I think it's the right thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Comments?
I absolutely concur. I have always been concerned that we need to spend whatever it takes to maintain a clean city. So I fully appreciate that. And I do thank Linda. She dragged me to Del Mar to see the condition of that restroom at one point in time, and lo and behold, it got fixed. So she's been amazing. So it works. Public input works.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I will offer mine. I agree with Councilmember Davis. Scott, great job on vetting this and minimizing costs. And again, I'll thank Linda as well, because I've gotten numerous emails from her, and her steadfastness has been important. Look forward to seeing some major improvements occur and a recommendation coming back from you as an action item. And also, I would just add Linda Donnelly's comment about Dog Beach, perhaps I'll leave that with staff to not comment on now, but perhaps look at and see if there are any.
It's a state.
Anybody want to make a comment on it?
Yes, I think it's.
I know that's a state area.
Yeah, so we can talk to them about that.
It's, I think Caltrans used to have a dumpster out there, or maybe it was Chevron, but it's not city property yet.
Perhaps we could make a notification or request to them for help.
And just, I wanted to note, a big, big, big thank you to the Consolidated Maintenance Team from Public Works Department. They're a skeleton crew that take care of our streets, our roads, our sidewalks, our lighting, trees, facilities, and then, you know, called upon for the heavy tourist season and, you know, unsung heroes. And thanks, Rob and Mike, Lil Cox, for their leadership on that.
Extend our thanks as well, please. Have enough input? I guess you do, huh? With that, that ends that item. I'll go to Item D, Council Declaration of Future Agenda Items. Any pressing items? Seeing none? The, I'll adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the Moro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, at 5:30 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 209 Surf Street, Moro Bay, California. Happy Valentine's Day and good evening.